We come up with about twice as many mission plans as we can possibly fly in the field. And that's simply so that we have enough target areas to choose from that have good weather while we are here in the field. And then we prioritize these plans.
We have to spend a very large amount of our time while we're in the field trying to sort of ascertain what the weather is going to do. It's a bit like reading tea leaves. It's a very inexact science. We depend entirely on what the meteor
Good evening and welcome to the Thousand Oaks City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 27th. Councilmember Jones, would you please lead us in the pledge to our flag?
I'd be glad to. Would we all please stand? Hand over heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jones. Madam Clerk, today will be Laura Maguire. Would you please do the roll call for us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McNamie.
Here.
Councilmember Engler.
Here.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña.
Present. Thank you. And we will begin with special presentations and announcement. For that, we go to our city manager Drew Powers for the latest on our COVID situation. Good evening.
Hi there, Mayor Bill De La Peña. Thank you for the opportunity. Very brief tonight, just focusing on a few key things. Numbers continue to look very, very good in Ventura County and across the state of California. The state of California now has the lowest positivity rate in the nation. We did not make it to the yellow tier today. We had hoped that the rate would take us into the yellow tier. Los Angeles County did get there. So we need to wait another week to hopefully get to that point. Fifty-two new cases reported today. So cases do continue to transmit out there. So that's why I want to encourage everyone when it's your opportunity. Vaccinations are now open and available to everyone that is eligible. A lot of different opportunities to do that through various channels and forums. So please avail yourself of the opportunity when it does come your way. VenturaCountyRecovers.org is the best location to go for information and to sign up for that appointment and to find out all the details. We're really pleased to be continuing down the road to reopening various services to in-person service. As a reminder, our services have been available in different formats throughout the year, but we are heading down the path towards reopening our in-person services in a safe and effective manner. Last week, we reopened the Grand Arboretum Hall Library for chunks of time. We've been doing good, steady traffic in there in a safe way and been able to manage to keep our curbside up for the time being. The counters in City Hall reopened yesterday and been able to process in-person transactions at the Public Works and Community Development counters. We're continuing to work on managing that traffic, understanding those traffic patterns and flows, and making additional adjustments as we move forward. We also anticipate some more announcements about additional return to in-person services and some timeframes around reopening the New Brook Park Branch Library and eventual some return to in-person participation at our council members with limitations on attendance. We'll be making announcements on that a little bit later on this week or beginning of the next week. That concludes my update for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. And here this evening with me actually is Mayor Pretend Bob Engler, who will be relieving me in just a few minutes. But we will continue with our next item, and that is a special presentation and special attention given to Autism Acceptance Month. And for that, I would like to welcome Cindy Lou, the founder and chief advocate of We Belong 805. And that's a group which advocates for community access and representation for disabled individuals living in Ventura County. And Ms. Lou, on behalf of the entire city council, I would like to present you with this proclamation here naming April 2021 Autism Acceptance Month. As you know, council recently made it our number-one goal to create a more equitable, accessible, safe, welcoming, and inclusive government for everyone. We recognize that there is a diverse autistic community in Thousand Oaks, and we believe that raising awareness and encouraging acceptance of autism is the first step toward achieving this most important goal. So Cindy, go ahead. I know you would like to say a few words regarding this. Good evening.
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for that kind and thoughtful introduction. First, I would like to express my sincere appreciation and applaud our council for unanimously making it our city's number-one priority to create a more equitable, accessible, safe, welcoming, and inclusive government and community for all. In preparation for tonight, I connected with the Autism Society of Ventura County as well as went to the Hive Mind on social media to better understand what our autism community wants people to reflect upon as we wrap up Autism Acceptance Month. The number-one sentiment shared was a desire for others to have a deeper understanding of autism so that we can break away from stereotypes. Autism is a broad spectrum filled with individuality. Autistics are not savants, can and do understand emotions. Some are nonverbal, others are very verbal. One mom said, if you've met one autistic person, you've met one autistic person. The Hive Mind also emphasized that the needs of those with autism and the disability community as a whole are not special needs. They are human needs. We all need to work to find love, to be part of a community, to contribute to that community, and to feel like we belong in that community. And most importantly, we all need equitable access and representation. A disability does not exclude you from those desires. Belonging comes when communities are intentionally considered during the design and planning phase. So thank you again to the city leaders and staff. I'd like to especially thank Kristy Globke and Melissa Hurtado, who worked with me to agendize and celebrate April as Autism Appreciation Month. We Belong 805 respectfully encourages our city council and city staff to continue to take even bigger strides forward in your commitment to equity, access, and inclusion by dedicating resources, actions, and setting measurable goals. It's not only the smart thing to do, but also the right thing to do. And I promise you, you will have community support for that work. I want to leave you all with a quote from Dr. Temple Grandin. She is autistic, a prominent author and speaker on both autism and animal behavior, and a professor of animal science at Colorado State University. Quote, "When I was younger, I was looking for this magic meaning of life. It's very simple now. Making the lives of others better, doing something of lasting value. That's the meaning of life. It's that simple." End quote. Thank you so much for your recognition and allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much for your advocacy. Very much appreciated. And finally, I am also excited to be able to welcome the fourth recipient of our monthly community commitment award. She is Nancy Luter. Nancy is a retired nurse who has devoted herself to giving back to the community. Before the pandemic, Nancy volunteered regularly at the Senior Concerns Adult Day program and the local food banks. But since the pandemic, she has committed herself even more to serving those in need. Nancy now coordinates a home-delivered meal program for senior concerns. She packs hundreds of meals each day and plants the volunteer driver's roots. She goes above and beyond in her service and is known to spend her own money and even more of her time to lend help wherever it is needed. As the person who nominated her said, Nancy is one of those amazing people that you feel lucky to know. She always uses her time to make people around her feel happy and supported. Certainly, we could all benefit from knowing someone like that. And now, we'd like to show you a video of the community commitment award recipient Nancy Luter.
Hello, my name is Claudia Bill de La Peña, and I am the mayor of the city of Thousand Oaks. And today, it gives me extreme pleasure to introduce to you the recipient of our monthly community commitment award. And for the month of April, that is retired registered nurse Nancy Luter. And Nancy has been volunteering for senior concerns for about seven years. Congratulations, Nancy. Let me give you the award for community commitment from the city of Thousand Oaks, and also the certificate of recognition to you.
It's an honor, and I'm very humbled. This goes out to everybody that I've worked with for the last year. There is a saying, it's, "For only what we give away enriches us from day to day." And there are so many ways that you can give part of yourself away, whether it's an hour a week, two or three, volunteering. The best gift is your time, your talents, and your passion. I think wherever it lies, there are opportunities, whether it's local ministries, organizations, to get out. You will get so much more reward, it's almost selfish at times, what you get back from volunteering.
Well, you are very deserving of the award because you've always wanted to give your entire life, as I have been told. And you are just someone who keeps on giving and wants to give more. So I know that this last year has been especially difficult for our community, and in particular, our seniors, especially the homebound seniors. So you have been very essential and instrumental in the meal delivery program that is sponsored by the Ventura County Area Agency of Aging, in concert with senior concerns. So tell me what you do.
We basically set up, we come in the morning, and we have between 130 to 140, a lot of specials. So again, I work in concert with the group. There are so many wonderful packers and drivers that help. We have students come from Oaks Christian, too, getting their community service. We bag them, any specials are labeled, and the food comes out, and we just start. And it's kind of rapid fire, and then the drivers come in, and the routes, everyone goes on their way. But it's just more than that. Manuel, he is just wonderful. He's the salt of the earth. This could not go down without him. As I say, the last year it's been such As I say, the last year, it's been such isolation and fear. Most of these volunteers are retirees, and they would get in their cars and leave, the comfort of their home to go out and do this. It's a wonderful group of people. They tend to be less self-centered, humble and grateful. And their desire to go out, as I say, you know, the last year, to leave their homes. Everyone was fearful, but this was more important, to look beyond themselves and to deliver these meals to people that needed them.
Tell me the reaction that you receive when you prepare these meals and take them to a homebound senior?
It's very heartwarming. I tend to stay more here as a coordinator, but I have delivered. And for some, it's a lifeline to sit down, to say hello, a little chit chat.
So this program really is much more than just a nutritional service or a meal delivery service. As you say, it's a lifeline. You actually check on people's well-being, see how they're doing, not only physically, but also emotionally.
They're wonderful. You know, it's a win-win, you know, and everybody goes that extra mile because they care.
This is not the first volunteer opportunity for you, nor will it be the last. But in all of your experience with volunteering, how does this, what you're doing now, compare?
You know what? Everything is different, you know, from doing blood pressures to the adult daycare. It all comes down to the same thing, just an exchange with wonderful people and doing something that you believe in or think's important or you meet wonderful people and you leave at the end of the day and you go, "This was good."
And there is a special person who can tell you more about Nancy and why she is extraordinary right now and has been in the last year during this pandemic. She works with Senior Concerns, and her name is Martha Shapiro.
Congratulations, Nancy, on your award. We are so honored that you spend your time with us at Senior Concerns and give to the community everything that you do. For years, I have worked with you, and you are such an amazing person. You care for everyone around you, including our staff, and when the pandemic hit, you stepped up. You said, "I cannot sit home. I have to help in my community." And we're so thankful for you and everything you do for all of our seniors, and we look forward to many more years working together.
The Community Commitment Award is to highlight rays of light in our community after a year of darkness, namely the COVID pandemic. And you can see why Nancy Luter fits this description, the category, and the award so very well. She is a ray of light. So if you know of a ray of light in our community, someone who has dedicated an immense amount of time, is passionate about giving back to the community, yet has not received recognition and has done the work pretty much under the radar, please nominate him or her or them. And you can nominate them by going to the website www.toaks.org/CCA. Again, congratulations to Nancy, and we will see you next month with our recipient for the Community Commitment Award for May. See you then. And Nancy is with us via telephone right now. Hi, Nancy.
Oh, good evening, Mayor and council members.
And I understand. Congratulations once again. And how has it been going with Senior Concerns and your volunteering since we last talked?
Not much of a change. Our numbers are holding. We're getting new drivers in. The need is still out there. I think the program might be extended. I'm not quite sure, but we had a June cutoff, and again, that would pretty much, you know, be up to Senior Concerns. But it is a wonderful program. The recipients are very grateful. The drivers are incredible, and I'm very fortunate to be part of it.
Well, Nancy, thank you so very much, and thank you for continuing this volunteering. And I hope that this program will be able to continue because, as you said, there is a need still in our community. So thank you very much.
Oh, thank you very much. Again, the award is lovely. Thousand Oaks is just such a wonderful, wonderful city to live in, to be part of, to work in. We're all very blessed to be here. So I again, thank you so very much for the recognition. It's for everybody that does, you know, contribute and make that work every day. So thank you so much.
You have a nice evening.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
And next, we will go to public comments, and we will have our city clerk, our assistant city clerk, make the announcement. I will then have our mayor pro tem take over because I will be actually testifying for the first time at a Senate Judiciary hearing in Sacramento on behalf of the City of Thousand Oaks regarding our power shut-offs and microgrids, super important. And I am honored to have been asked to testify by State Senator Henry Stern. I believe that this is the first time that the City of Thousand Oaks is doing this via telephone from here. And so why don't you go ahead and make the announcement, Ms. Maguire?
This is the time and place for public comments for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. And under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Twenty-nine individuals have requested to speak, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Thank you very much. That is 29 speakers and three minutes each. We will go with our first person, Chris Heath. Good evening.
Hello.
We can hear you, Chris.
Perfect. Hi, my name is Chris Heath, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. Thank you all for your time and allowing me to speak this evening. I hope everybody as well. My family and I have been in Thousand Oaks for the past six years, and I have three kids in the elementary system, elementary school system. We love Thousand Oaks and plan to be here for a very long time. I'm a former cannabis public company CEO that started, purchased, and operated a number of cannabis assets in California, Oregon, and up and down the West Coast. In the span of 12 months between 2019 and 2020, my team and I acquired a dispensary in Portland, a delivery service in Sacramento, and from scratch started manufacturing and distribution businesses in Santa Rosa. Towards the end of 2020, the cannabis companies my team and I created were sold to another publicly traded company. Since the transaction, I've been surveying the cannabis landscape in Thousand Oaks, and from my perspective, perspective, excuse me, it's taken an exceptionally long time for the two groups to get any movement on launching a medical dispensary. And based on my research and sources, both groups are still pretty far out from being operational. With all that said, I'd like to know if the city council and city manager would consider opening another round of applications for a medical dispensary. If so, I believe based on my experience, I can have a very competitive application ready in 30 to 45 days from the opening of the application window. I'm actively registered with the BCC, so I'm in good standing with the cannabis or the California Cannabis Regulator, which will eventually help streamline the process. The cannabis network I've built is deep and diverse, which in my experience will also significantly speed up the process to becoming operational. Thank you all again for your time, and I look forward to working with the city council, the city manager, and the community to generate tax income and to provide a much-needed service to the City of Thousand Oaks. Please feel free to ask any questions, obviously, from the City Hall, the mayor said there is no questions, but thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. Our next speaker is LaShawn Aaron.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, City Council, for allowing us to speak. And I want to really thank you for making diversity and inclusion a top goal. It means a lot to many of us here in the community. My name is LaShawn Aaron, as was stated, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I've been here for about 10 years. My son and I moved here from Camarillo. And, you know, I'm just going to give you guys a little bit of my bio. A Christian, an adoptive parent. I was actually raised in the church, Sunday School, Bible study, joining the choir, all that good stuff. I also worked in social services with youth of families in Ventura County, families that were in crisis and many adverse situations. So I thank you all for listening to those of us that spoke about our experiences. I believe that equity and inclusion requires an equity commission for us to determine how best to accomplish these goals and make Thousand Oaks a city that's welcome to all. I don't want to spend too much time addressing things that were said that were negative and negating other people's experiences, but I do think it was very sad that some people felt it was okay to demean others and undermine their experiences when it takes a lot of courage to talk about things that have wounded you. It takes a lot of courage to stand up and speak in a public space, to say things that, you know, have been traumatic to you. It takes a lot of courage to do that. Racism, it doesn't have to be something that another person experiences for it to be real. It's just like if you go on a hike with someone, a good friend of yours, and you see them, you know, maybe in distress, and they start saying, "Well, I need water," or "I've got a headache," and you respond with, "Well, I don't see that, and it's not happening to me. I don't have a headache." You know, where is the empathy and compassion and humanity in that type of response? And so I want to just make it clear that you don't have to experience it for it to be real. It's just like as a Christian, you know, we believe in God and Jesus Christ. Other people don't, and to them, it's not real. But we understand the power of God. We see it. We experience it in our lives, and it's very real to us. And so I think as Christians especially, because it was very disheartening for me to hear other people that identify as Christians taking that sort of very dismissive stance on other people's experiences. So I know that I can't reach everyone, but my hope is that those who have a sense of humanity and humility will be open to learn from other human beings and that we can come together. And I will leave you with this, because I know I'm a white Muslim. Revelation 6:2 says, "Carry each other's burdens." And in this way, you will feel the law of Christ. So we need to learn how to carry each other's burdens and be a better community for that. Thank you.
Thank you, LaShawn. Our next speaker is up is Stephanie Sullivan, followed by Dr. Jasprit Taker.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Sullivan, and I have been a resident of Thousand Oaks for 14 years. I also received two degrees at Cal Lutheran and worked there for many years. I've been a renter, and I'm now a homeowner, and of course, I pay taxes here. I'm a member of 805 Resistance, and we are committed to meaningful change in our city. You've heard from so many of us, and that's because we are truly committed in our mission and care deeply about our community and the people who call it home, no matter how long they have lived here. I appreciate that City Council has made equity and inclusion a top goal for the city, and I know that this is just the beginning of addressing issues of racial injustice. In order to continue this work, I believe it is imperative that the City Council establish a commission dedicated to equity that can continue the work of reaching this goal. There are so many issues that need to be addressed, which were clear from the comments made by speakers at the April 13th City Council meeting. Considering that so many of the speakers believe that we are not members of the community, people who have commented in the past, that we are trying to stoke racism and believe that racism is non-existent in Thousand Oaks shows how important this commission is to make progress. Black Indigenous and people and other people of color do not need to put their trauma on display for us to believe that they experience racism. However, we have heard at several city council meetings for members of our community about the racism and discrimination they have faced. They have put their mental health at further risk to share their experiences and relive that trauma. So the claim that no one showed any evidence is just wrong. We should all believe our neighbors when they share with us. One speaker said that she has never experienced white privilege and doesn't know what it is. That is white privilege in action, not being aware of racism in our community and how your life has been less difficult. Not free from sorghum, but less difficult because of the color of your skin is a privilege in and of itself. Given all of the comments that were made and all of the work that has been put towards making equity a priority, I hope that you will listen to all of the community members who have put forth more requests for an equity commission from all of the different organizations that have spoken and make this a reality. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Stephanie. Up now is Dr. Jasprit Taker.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Jas Taker, and I'm the new program director for the new residency program that's opening up at Los Robles Hospital. And I really appreciate the time to talk to you all today. We're very excited to get the graduate medical education program started at Los Robles and to train the next generation of doctors. So we're very excited to get rolling on July 1st. You know, I often get asked, you know, what does it mean to be a teaching hospital or have residents at a hospital? There are many benefits to actually having residents at the hospital. The residents add to the quality of care, and in fact, they increase the quality of care. I know Los Robles already has a very high standard of care. I think the residents will only add to that and take that to the next level. There's abundant amount of data looking at graduate medical education and how it impacts not only trainees, but sponsoring institutions, the community, and overall health of the patients that we serve. Furthermore, if you look at the patient safety and quality improvement, there's always been a very positive effect with graduate medical education. There are several studies that show that virtually all important health outcomes, teaching hospitals perform at the same level, if not better, than non-teaching hospitals. But I think one of the key reasons of having a graduate medical education at Los Robles will be the ability to not only train the residents, but also retain them within our community, thus helping us bring quality physicians to our hospitals and communities. It's a great opportunity for us to really connect them with the community and help them serve this community for a long time to come. There's great value to economic and healthcare values as well from graduate medical education. Graduate medical education creates a physician workforce that provides care locally while physicians are training. But additionally, as the physicians tend to locate near the community in which they are training, they can also serve the community for a very long time. The local workforce reduces recruitment costs for hospitals and practices. It helps retain providers and mitigate shortages, positively affecting local healthcare practices in terms of increased community capacity and enhanced relationships between local hospitals and communities. This in turn is self-perpetuating, as a community with an active physician workforce tends to be a very attractive place for medical students to want to come to do their residency training. Also, it helps include supporting jobs, increases in wages and benefits, and state tax revenues as well. So we're looking to be starting with 20 residents on July 1st. And amongst those 20 that are joining us, several of them have ties to the Cano Valley. And in fact, a few of them were born at Los Robles Hospital, and a few even have their children at Los Robles. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to inspire, bring local talent, and hopefully fill the needs that we have in our community. I think the residency program provides also-
Doctor, that's three minutes. I appreciate you bringing this to us. It's nice to have that feature coming to our hospitals. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Bobbette Preciado.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Bobbette. We can hear you, Bobbette.
Okay. Can you still hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Let me start. I'm against the general plan as it will turn Cano Valley into the San Fernando Valley. Those of us who have purchased property in Cano Valley have done so because we wanted this family lifestyle, and so we've spent heavily for this. I'm also against any social justice commission in the Cano Valley. It is just a way to divide our community and manipulate our white citizens in our community by calling them racists or white supremacists. Social justice is pure evil, racism at its worst. As a first-generation Mexican-American who was born in Oxnard, I was taught to be proud of my Hispanic heritage, but to be prouder because I'm American first. We live in the greatest country in this world. I came to call Thousand Oaks my home in 1991 and purchased my first home in 1994. I have been warmly embraced by this community. I have never experienced racism in the Cano Valley the entire time I have lived in our great community. My son started school in first grade. He graduated from Thousand Oaks High School. My husband managed all of his Little League teams, and I was the team mom. We've met thousands and thousands of people in this community over the 30 years that we've lived here. Never once have I experienced racism. I worked at Amgen for 13 of those years. I've always felt that Cano Valley has warmly embraced one another in this community. And it's not a coincidence that the self-proclaimed Marxist leader from BLM has purchased property in Topanga Canyon. This group is coming to destroy our- community, just as they did Portland, Oregon, and Seattle, Washington. They are trying to bait our city council members by calling them white supremacists and other community members racist, which we are not. We are a warm and embracing community. The city council must not waste our tax dollars on this social justice racist nonsense. The city council needs to stand up against BLM and Antifa and other extremist groups who will try to destroy our community as they destroyed cities across America totaling over two billion in dol- da- dollars in damage last year. Our police force must be supported as our community is about to see an evil it has never seen before. BLM and other extremist groups are going to try to bring critical race theory into our community. This is the most racist ideology I have ever seen. It is pure evil and should be seen as Nazism, which it is. As a Hispanic, I am appalled that it teaches white people to be ashamed of themselves just because they are white. They have that they have some sort of privilege because of the color of their skin is absurd. Every race should be proud of their background. We all come from beautiful cultures, and that is what makes America great. It's our diverse backgrounds. My family was ahead of its time, but especially my dad. I am a woman in my mid-fifties and was taught that I could be anything I wanted to be, including the President of the United States. I believed it then, and I believe it to the state of my core. In America and in our great community, you can be anything you want to be. It is up to you. A couple of weeks ago, someone spoke on it. Just a second. It's really important.
Okay.
Spoke on equity for our community. BLM and Antifa and other anarchist groups using equity as equity as one of their platforms. I have worked hard on my life, used the brain that God gave me, and have used it to obtain the life that I've earned. There is no secret to success other than using the gifts that God yet. Please let me finish. It's three seconds. My husband and um
No, you're
In America, we're given equal rights, and it's up to each individual.
Thank you, Bobette. Um, we have to, we have to move on to other people because we have quite a few people who would like to speak tonight. I appreciate what you're saying, but we have to give everybody else a chance. Um, our next speaker is Anna Marie Winnick.
Oh, I gotta go. Hang on, hang on. I gotta go. Okay, how do I do this?
You, we can hear you, Anna Marie.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not hearing you. Let me make sure. Okay, yeah, you can hear me now?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. All right. Thank you so much. Um, I wanted to just, you know, thank you, City Council, for all that you are doing. I know that you are contending with so many pressures and different opinions and input from both inside and outside of the community. And I would like to urge each of you to only listen to those of us that actually live in Thousand Oaks, Canejo Valley, um, that actually pay the taxes here. It is very offensive to hear that people are being hired from outside to feed into um our input as to what should happen in our community. Um, I also want to um add to the previous speaker that we do not, I mean, w- we we are so blessed. I was just talking to someone who is celebrating Ramadan right now. I'm actually Christian. We do not have a pervasive racism issue here, but they are trying to wake up here in our community. It does not exist. Um, I also want to ask that you pay attention to the homeless issue. I live over by Jan's and the twenty-three, and it is very frustrating to have a meth lab and have neighbors being attacked by homeless that are not being safe over there and are coming at more and more of them are just building camp, making their home outside. It's very offensive to those of those of us that are paying such high taxes. Um, moving on, I also want to ask that you um think about this issue with the um with the how with the developing eighty thousand, you know, low-income units. It's so frustrating, the survey process that has been um that has been um executed. The surveys are statistically invalid. They are very hard to find. I find that numerous constituents are not aware of this of this process even happening, and therefore cannot give input and have strong feelings about it. So I understand that you can't control the plandemic and all of that, but despite of despite having the COVID epidemic, I would ask the city to take extra precautions to make sure that you do reach each constituent, that they are aware of these major decisions that are being made and discussed. Um, all citizens should have a vehicle through which to um have input on how they feel about it. You are asking us to contend with more traffic. You are asking us to have, you know, more construction when we already have vacant buildings that are that exist and uh that could be used. We do not need to make more um buildings that we already have. Um, I also want to um, I'm just concerned as a
Anna Marie, you're your time is up. If you can, if you can wrap up, that'd be great. Do you have anything else to say, Anna Marie? Thank you. Thank you for that. We appreciate it. Uh, next up is Sasha Epstein.
Hello, City Council. Thanks for, thanks for having me. Uh, my name is Sasha, and I've been a resident in Newbury Park for three years. Um, I spoke a few weeks ago regarding eight oh five's resistance push uh for Thousand Oaks to create a diversity, inclusion, and equity commission. Uh, and I decided to speak once again to follow up with some additional thoughts and questions. So after the April thirteenth meeting, uh, it was brought to my attention that eight oh five resistance had posted uh responses on their social media uh to the statements that were delivered against the agenda. Uh, I I can't say I was surprised by what I saw. You know, the responses range everything from just silly, immature, uh, but also pretty derogatory, um, and some racial epithets as well to describe one of the speakers. And so for the record, eight oh five resistance, I don't, I don't go to God speak church and um or any church, but thanks a lot for the A plus. Uh, so but the reason I'm speaking out once more against this push is simply because it's clear that based on the responses that the group is demanding diversity, inclusion, and equity commission possesses nefarious intentions. It it's been two weeks since the last meeting. They're yet to address any comments made here in terms of um how they imagine this group will operate. And once again, they they provided no evidence of um quote-unquote systemic racism or this supposed quote-unquote inequality that was carried out by Thousand Oaks, Ventura County, um, or in general, the United States. Um, that that same message is pretty pervasive on on their site and in the petition itself, again, without any evidence. Uh, but they were very quick to label everyone who opposes their push as, quote, "our white supremacist neighbors." Uh, never mind the fact that the group here was, you know, pretty diverse in immutable traits such as race and nationality, but much more. Sadly, it seems that eight oh five resistance really only cares about these immutable traits, which by definition is racist in itself. So based on the social media presence, it's clear uh the group is led by ideologues convinced that our community is being heavily radicalized by alt-right white supremacy propaganda.
Okay.
Uh, and I don't think it's very productive to paint those that disagree with you as quite easily racist um or unempathetic. So these ideologies where one group paints another uh as collectively guilty based on things like race or religion, regardless of crimes perpetrated, have led to inexplicable amount of damage in the twentieth century. Um, and so, well, it it's incredibly dangerous to have that type of ideology um what once again here. And so it behooves the council and the rest of the the group listening to really think deeply and and critically about these demands and the future of this community. Uh, I would think about the intentions of the commission. Uh, what will they accomplish? How about the group's pernicious accusations that the city of thousand about the city of Thousand Oaks? Do we not have equality of opportunity here? Because if this group is about equality and after equality of outcome,
Sasha.
that's very expressed.
Sasha, Sasha, sorry, your your time is up, and I appreciate it. Next up is Diana Mervill. Thank you.
Hello, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Let me start my video here. Uh, my name's Diana Mervell, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I've been here for twenty-one years, and I'd like to speak on the proposed land use general plan changes. Um, so my husband and I moved here twenty-one years ago to escape the San Fernando Valley and uh to get away from the big city life and the traffic and congestion and to live out here where we could have our horses, goats, and chickens in our backyard and raise our three children in what at the time was a semi-rural community. Our children have gone through the local public schools, including Los Doritos and Thousand Oaks High School. And this is really a jewel in this area, the fact that it has been slow growth for so many years. And I'm really alarmed that uh that this general plan change is going to radically change the slow growth that we have moved here for. Um, one of my concerns is how the survey is being advertised. I've talked with many, many people in this community, and I am shocked to find out how very few are aware of the land use changes and the surveys. And so I'm also wondering what is considered an acceptable sample lot of responses out of over a hundred thousand residents. Um, if only a few hundred reply and respond, that to me is not an effective sample of responses. And if we only get a few hundred responses, I think the city council then should be putting out mailers to the people's mailboxes, uh, something to reach out to the actual residents of Thousand Oaks. And I'm also wondering how you control outsiders being able to fill out the survey, like special interest groups or friends of the developers. It really should be the local residents. I think you'll find that most people who've been here over fifteen years uh do not want to have this rapid growth. Um, I'd also like to ask City Council to do some traffic studies. Uh, I have some serious traffic concerns. Um, if we're adding twenty-six hundred more units in the immediate future, we're talking at least five thousand cars. If you look at two cars per household, um, and then the land use ordinance could increase up to thirty-three thousand units, which would be sixty-six thousand additional cars on our streets. And I already hate to drive down Moore Park Road at rush hour or Hillcrest or Thousand Oaks Boulevard. They're already congested. They're just two-lane streets. I don't see how we can handle more uh population density here. So I really implore the City Council to please consider some traffic uh studies before you vote on approving the land use changes, and also how it would strain our electrical grid and uh our water resources, um, as well as the environmental impacts uh for the flood mitigation zone, of which thirty-six acres of Casa Canejo would be proposed, seven hundred and twenty units there. So I know my time is up.
Diana, you're
Say thank you for letting me speak, and I hope that City Council, you'll please consider these before you make any voting on the measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Um, Karen Wilburn is up.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, ma'am. We can hear you.
Uh, my name is, thank you. My name is Karen Wilburn. I've been a resident of Newbury Park for twenty-two years. I've not been active in civic matters for the most part, but after attending the February second meeting introducing the briefing book, I became concerned and began to post on Nextdoor to engage others. I wrote letters to the Acorn and delivered flyers in my neighborhood. My goal was and is to educate others and myself on this issue. Out of this grew a grassroots group called Canejo Valley Advocates for Sensible Planning. Yesterday, I was made aware of a blog post by a blogger called Anonymous Mommy. Imagine my surprise when one of the public speakers, not the blogger, last night read what appeared to be the her post verbatim. The speaker closed with the comment, "These are just a few of the lies and propaganda statements made by Karen Wilburn of Newbury Park." Other than one post in which I replied to someone's question and used the phrase, "Be afraid, be very afraid," these allegations are false. Nextdoor can get heated, and some of these comments that are being attributed to me were actually made by others in the thread. They were not my comments. I have never posted comments marginalizing low-income residents, threats to target those that don't agree, fears about property values, or increases in crime. In fact, in a couple of cases, when I found I posted inaccurate information, I posted a correction to maintain my credibility. Since I'm new to this process, perhaps I'm a little naive, but to be the subject of such bullying tactics is unconscionable and should be publicly denounced by the Planning Commission and City Council. I think one commissioner made the comment last night, "Follow the money." Obviously, I've hurt hit some nerves, but this type of action shouldn't be tolerated. I guess if you can't argue the facts, then attack the messenger. One comment about the Borchardt property. It was very late last night when these decisions were made. Everyone was tired, and I believe one commissioner even asked a question that led me to believe he was not fully aware of the complexities of the parcel. I would encourage the commissioners to reconsider their vote on this parcel, perhaps even a field trip to view it from all sides. I understand the property owner has plans which are supported by several people who spoke last night. The concern of us, however, is that plans are just that. There are no guarantee of what will ultimately be proposed. The city staff has confirmed that once the land use is determined, the owner has the right to seek the maximum density, and the city will have limited ability to object other than EIR and infrastructure issues. We just want some guarantees before this goes through. Perhaps this lot could be taken off the plan uh completely and reviewed separately on the basis of the owner's plans. At least then we would be assured of what's being promised us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Karen. The next up, we have Michelle Ribling.
Can you hear me?
We have you, Michelle. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Michelle Ribling, and I have lived in Thousand Oaks since nineteen fifty-eight, and thank you so much for letting me speak. With due respect, in the interest of the three minutes, I'm probably going to talk kind of fast. As a retired emergency manager for the City of Los Angeles, I know local government accountability for the safety and resiliency of its population. Thousand Oaks City Council should not be approving further general plan development at this time without identifying exactly how this might compromise sustainability and safety to us in light of recent developments. A study should be done on current capabilities and available resources, including for people with disabilities. These are just some of the few issues. Emergency resources, current police numbers, fire numbers, evacuation resources, shelter services, transportation resource capability. More people require more capability and resources. Do we have enough now? Water. You can't miss the articles on how we're moving into unprecedented drought conditions currently. Residents are currently rationing with higher costs over baseline. Now you want to add more people to spread water resources thinner? How are you ensuring no increased water shortages and homes don't incur extra costs and emergency backup water resources are in place for the summer ahead for the people who currently live here? Medical and hospital surge. COVID has definitely demonstrated we don't have enough medical surge capability for current populations as we saw ICUs becoming compromised. What is the City Council doing to ensure adequate medical surge for the current residents before adding more? Southern California supply chain. COVID demonstrated how quickly supply chain collapse under catastrophic events happen. Now you want to bring in more people to spread thinner and decrease sustainability? What have you done to ensure supply chain resiliency for the current residents before adding more? What have you done to ensure renters will color carry full and equal share of more city costs rather than leaving it up to the landlords to determine what kind of fees they're going to recover for our city costs? We don't have to comply with state mandates, and other communities are refusing. It may mean you don't get federal subsidies or grants that go to internal city departments, but the impact and cost to homeowners have far outweighed any of these benefits. The city, these city council decisions have not transparently shown the benefit to their constituents and not just to internal city department budgets. We should vote for no further development at this time. Thank you for allowing me to voice my comments.
Thank you, Michelle. Um, and I'll be turning back over now to uh our mayor, Claudia Bildherr-Penney.
Thank you, Mayor Pratam Engler. So our next speaker will be Jackson Piper, followed by Emily Morales, and then Clint. Jackson Piper is next.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Um, thank you, members of the City Council and members of the public who are attending this meeting. My name is Jackson Piper. I am a over thirty-year resident of unincorporated Newbury Park. Um, I'm here at this point in the meeting to speak to you about diversity and inclusion and to speak some uncomfortable truths about the origins of this community and why some people may be unaware of uh the systemic racism that does unfortunately tie in here. Uh, people are by nature concerned about change and afraid of the unknown, and that as an evolutionary instinct has served us very well. Whenever there's something unusual that might be a threat, we uh have our fight-or-flight reflexes activate and uh gives us a greater chance of of surviving whatever is to come. Uh, unfortunately, Unfortunately, in modern life, that has translated to certain worldviews that don't really take into account reality in these situations. So in the 1960s, certain people were fleeing big cities in the U.S., including Los Angeles, for new, lower-density, auto-oriented suburban communities. One of the primary reasons for this was fear of the unknown, fear of change. It was basically the civil rights area and immediately afterward, and white people, as a big part of this, were afraid of what would become of them as these formerly segregated populations of Black Americans, Latinos, Asian Americans could now live and work and recreate among them within the urban areas. So these auto-oriented suburbs were created as a haven for these white refugees, not explicitly, but by design, basically. The first Levittowns, which became the model for suburbia, had covenants that prevented Black people from purchasing homes to maintain home values supposedly because of the fears of white people moving into the neighborhood and, or not white, of Black people moving into white neighborhoods and destroying the property values. So now, moving on to Thousand Oaks, which was primarily developed after incorporated in 1964, we have people fleeing Los Angeles for a auto-oriented suburban environment, which was very well-planned by the Janes Corporation and by others to use the best of 1960s and 1970s planning knowledge to create a very nice community for a certain type of person. And I want you all to think about what is likely to happen when a Black person drives their car from wherever they're originating into a majority-white area, even today.
Mr. Piper, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Emily Morales, followed by Clint, and then Valerie Quintanilla.
Good evening, city council members and city staff. My name is Emily Morales, and I'm a student of Kalina Middle School. I recently was listening to the city council meetings with my family, and I heard some comments about racism in the city. So today, I took the time to tell you my side of the story. When people say there is racism in this community, they're not lying about it, but we're not saying that everyone in this community is racist. Let's get that message clear. Today, I'm going to be talking about how I witnessed firsthand racism towards my mother. My mother was involved in a small car accident in the gas station a block away from where we live. A man suddenly started screaming, "I hope you got insurance to pay for her car, you illegal immigrant," and threatening to call ICE on her. Not only did he assume my mother was illegal, but he did it in front of her three kids. I think it's terrible how people can't even walk down their own street without being racially discriminated. I'm only 12 years old. I shouldn't have to be listening to this type of things in my community. To be hearing that from a man who didn't know a thing about my family nor had anything to do with the incident was infuriating, frustrating, and very upsetting. At the moment, I was very shocked and had no words to say in order to defend my mother. It was completely unexpected. I would like those people who don't believe in racial discrimination to be put in my parents' shoes in order for them to understand what us and the minorities in this community have to go through. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Emily, as a 12-year-old middle schooler, wow. Thank you. Thank you for saying that, and I think, you know, you have quite a future ahead of you. Just keep it up. Next up, we have Clint, and then Valerie Quintanilla, followed by Laura Spock.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council. My name is Clint, and I'm a renter here in Thousand Oaks. I would like to acknowledge that we are on the lands of the Chumash peoples, and for thousands of years, before any of us were even born, they were the caretakers of this land. I was born at a hospital in Westlake Village, which no longer stands, and I grew up here in Thousand Oaks. Throughout my life, I've spent more than 30 years in the Cano Valley. During my childhood, I witnessed many instances of racism, so to say that racism has no roots in Thousand Oaks is disingenuous at best. From racial slurs to a group of neo-Nazi skinheads, the speech and symbols of white supremacy could be found in our city. Latinx persons were referred to as Mexicans, no matter which country they or their ancestors were from. Sometimes the racism was subtle, and other times it was more overt, but it was here nonetheless. The United States of America was founded with the capital raised from the cotton industry, which was built by Black slaves on land forcibly taken from indigenous Americans. This country was racist by design, and to deny that is to deny history. Some people cherry-pick historical accounts in an attempt to create a mythologized history of the U.S. They deny the roots of systemic racism in order to create an alternate reality, one that asks you to deny what you see and hear with your own eyes and ears. Just last month, I stood on the front lawn of the Thousand Oaks Civic Center for a Stop Asian Hate Rally and heard story after story of racist treatment against Asian Americans. Many of the storytellers were just children. It was absolutely heartbreaking to hear the racial slurs they were called and to hear their stories of physical bullying. It is truly Orwellian to be told that racism does not exist. It is an outright denial of reality, and it puts lives at risk. The white folks here in Cano Valley need to acknowledge that racism is an ongoing, often life-threatening problem for Black, Indigenous, and people of color. To quote Ibram X. Kendi, "The only way to undo racism is to consistently identify and describe it and then dismantle it." White folks must listen, actually listen with empathy and compassion. We must come from a place of love and understanding. We must identify the racism within us, and we must support anti-racist ideas and anti-racist policies, because every child should have equal opportunities and freedom from harm. Every parent should know that their child will come home safe at the end of the day. I applaud the city council for making equity and inclusion top goals for the City of Thousand Oaks. It's up to white folks like myself to support those goals and speak out when others choose to ignore the voices of Black, Indigenous, and people of color. It's up to us to not only listen, but to look deep within ourselves and dismantle the false hierarchies that exist within our hearts and minds. We must do the work of self-reflection every single day. We must guide our community forward with anti-racist ideas and anti-racist policies so that every single one of us is included in a truly equitable future, and the formation of an equity commission could certainly help create that future. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you. Next, we have Valerie Quintanilla, followed by Laura Spock, and then Nico van Niekerk.
Good morning, Mayor Bildelapena and city council members and staff. My name is Valerie Aguilar, and I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks for 12 years now. I've grown up here, graduated high school here, and still have families and loved ones residing here. However, recent public comments have caused quite a concern for not only myself, but for my loved ones. Many residents have taken to deny the personal accounts of many minorities, including myself, as we advocate for a more inclusive environment in our cities, jobs, and even our schools, with the majority of these comments coming from residents who seem to not have truly experienced these racist and hateful accounts themselves and are lucky enough to never have gone through that. As you keep hearing more public comments tonight, with many from younger students and older residents, I want to ask not only the city council members, but the people watching at homes. What are you afraid of? Why is the idea of equity and combating racism so upsetting to you? Many have tried to claim that we had an amazing opportunity for our minority residents, but these have only been a thing of recent years. Are we well aware that it wasn't until last year that Westlake High School implemented a Latinos connection? Are we aware that it wasn't until this school year that Thousand Oaks saw its first Black Student Union? And are we also aware that community organizations such as Adelante Comunidad are just newly formed? So what does that say about our community? Out of the 12 years I've lived here and my stepdad's entire adolescence and adulthood, we have seen such little progress. If we wish to see more progress, then why are our community residents trying to stop it? Why are they trying to deter away from minority voices, for Latinos such as myself, from having a spot at the table? As I've listened and heard of fellow neighbors denouncing the claims and personal accounts of minorities in our community, it truly shows that they're not teaching their children the kindness that they preach. I wish to conclude by saying that equity is not a scary word. Racism is an important issue to tackle if we want to come closer together as a community, as it's a lack of education that causes these fears. And as taxpayers, you should be advocating for a better community, not just for what benefits your children and your families, but for others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Laura Spock, followed by Nico van Niekerk, and then Jessica Quintanilla.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hello, my name is Laura Spock. My husband and I have lived in this beautiful community for 25 years. We have raised our children here. I taught in Cano Valley Unified School District during the 90s, and I am a co-owner of a business based here in Newberry Park. Part of the reason we moved to this city is for its all-inclusiveness and the fact that many ethnicities and races have been thriving and enjoying the community here. I hope that as our city council, you were encouraged by all the speeches last week and all the letters that dominated the Acorn. I also hope that you can clearly see the plot by radical extremists and that their demands to subject our community to a social justice commission is completely unsubstantiated, unfounded, and unsupported by the facts and the history of the City of Thousand Oaks. I want to commend the residents, not the outsiders of Thousand Oaks, but the real residents of Thousand Oaks. And I know that there are exceptions. Of course, there are. And there are people that behave badly, and that is always going to be the case. But to make these broad, sweeping generalizations and make such an indictment against our beautiful city is completely unfounded. All these residents who have been commenting that you gave me the confidence to come out for the first time and speak tonight, we are not racist. We support traditional family values, and we welcome all races. In fact, in the 25 years that I have lived here, I have never heard one person make a determination. That's a different subject than what's been discussed, a determination about someone else based on their race. I can say this as I was a teacher, as a patron of countless businesses here in the community, and now as a business owner myself. I do not see that being a systemic problem here in Thousand Oaks. So this call of the 805 resistance was just too much to bear for any sane Thousand Oaks resident, and I believe that is why there has been such an outcry during the city council meetings against their invalid claims. I want to thank the city council, because you are the voice of our community and that you don't pander to their hatred. Does 805 resistance not realize what they are asking the city to do, that by establishing a social justice committee in and of itself, that is inspiring racism? How can setting up a committee based solely on the color of one's skin perpetuate anything other than discrimination?
Thank you, Ms. Spock. Your time is up. Next, we have Nico van Niekerk, followed by Jessica Quintanilla, and then Carol Shelton.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I thank you for the opportunity. I want to give a different perspective on the social justice initiative based on my experience. I brought my family over from South Africa in 1993 because of this nation's constitution. I could have chosen many other countries with a more British culture, such as driving on the wrong side of the road, but I chose the U.S. because of its constitution. It guarantees liberties that no other country could offer. After graduating high school class of 1963, I joined the military and became a cartographer drawing maps. With the Cuban Missile Crisis just over, it became known that the Soviet Union was planning an invasion of South Africa through Angola with Cuban surrogate forces. My involvement in that war from before it started made me acutely aware of the tactics that are used to install communism, with the consent of the people, no less. Three things are necessary: an idol, a villain, and violence. The idol could be someone like George Floyd. The villain could be an entire race group, such as the white people, and violence is their battle plan. You and I cannot change the idol nor the villain, but we can defuse their battle plan. They first provoke law enforcement, and when the police act, they demonize the police to disarm them under the pretense of protesting, using slogans like "When injustice becomes law, resistance becomes a duty." There's no space in that slogan for law enforcement nor peace, which is intentional. In the almost 30 years that I've lived in Thousand Oaks, I've never encountered any trace of racism, injustices, systemic or otherwise. In fact, just the opposite. Nobody has ever been refused access to the city to raise concerns, injustices, and complain about other issues. It just hasn't been used deliberately. 805 resistance is intended on demonizing the good work that has been done for many years, replacing it with lawlessness and totalitarianism. At this phase in the communist takeover of South Africa, which is the intimidation phase, the ANC burned their own people alive in public if they dissented. It is called necklacing, and you can Google that. Oftentimes, when we drove home, we could see plumes of smoke rising in the neighborhood, causing us to take a detour, because that's where people were being burned alive. These so-called justice warriors are now in the intimidation phase, following the communist playbook to the latter by burning things and killing people to intimidate us into submission. Their first assault is to introduce a social justice commission so that they can disarm you in the boardroom. Do not allow them in. Let them obey the law like everyone else. Let them file complaints, if they have any, that can be investigated and resolved. I urge the city to encourage our police so that they may know they can deal with riots and lawlessness with courage and conviction and educate our people in the virtues of this nation. I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. We have next Jessica Quintanilla, followed by Carol Shelton, and then Johanna Jones.
Good evening, council members and city staff. My name is Jessica Quintanilla, and I have lived in Thousand Oaks for 12 years. I'm a member of Adelante Comunidad Cano, and I want to start with letting you know that I don't have any political affiliation. I'm not a paid member of any organization. I'm not an outsider, and I'm not a radical. I'm just a human being like any other who respects, and I expect the same from others. Before living in this city, I lived for 10 years in Los Angeles. Since I moved in here, I have been told a couple of times in this community to go back to Mexico, when I'm not even from Mexico. They had called me stupid Hispanic. And when a councilman of this city said, and I quote, "There shouldn't be no racism whatsoever in this city." We shouldn't even have the word, because we don't believe in it. I felt that he was calling me a liar and that I have to ignore any of the situation my family and I have had experienced. I felt offended by his comment. I felt that he tried to ignore a very important situation that minorities living in this community are very aware of. What was more appalling to me was to hear that some of the members of this community wanted proof and evidence that there is racism in this city. Have one of you taken the time to ask any of us? How is our everyday life living in here is like? I bet you will get the answer you're not expecting to hear. Just because we don't share our stories doesn't mean it's not happening. Just because we don't go to the police and file a hate report doesn't mean it's not happening. My family and I own a cleaning company. We clean an average of 12 houses daily, Monday through Saturday. We don't have the time to go to the police station and file a case that it won't be followed through. I prefer to spend that time educating my kids about the microaggressions they can have in this community and to let them know there's still some good in people. I want to be clear that not every and each other of the residents in this community are racist or discriminate against minorities, that it's not true. I have known wonderful and kind people, and I can generalize, but trying to ignore a real issue is not helping at all. My kids don't need to learn to just deal with it. It will be much better to stop denying we have an issue and we need to fix it. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you. Next, we have Carol Shelton, followed by Johanna Jones, and then Lisa Powell.
Good evening, Mayor Bildelapena, council members and city staff. My name is Carol Shelton, and I live in Thousand Oaks. I've lived in Thousand Oaks for 40 years. My daughter and I attended Ladera, Los Cerritos, and Thousand Oaks High School. My boys both attended district schools, both started at Horizon Hills, followed by Aspen Elementary. Both of my boys have autism. I want to thank the city council for issuing an autism acceptance proclamation. Our family knows firsthand the joys and experience that raising children with autism brings. I also want to thank the city council for making equity and inclusion a top goal in our city. Not everyone in our community understands why this goal is necessary, and that's why I'm sharing my family's stories this evening. As a teenager, I was called horrible names, catcalled in the street, and treated as less than. I did not want the same for my boys, who have additional barriers. Shortly after realizing that my oldest son would have lifelong disabilities, I refrained from indicating that he had, he has Mexican heritage. I also hesitated at having my boys participate in Indian education. My boys are air-coy and blackfoot. I can tell you that my children pass as white, however, my nephew does not. I was shopping with my daughter and nephew in a store in Westlake Village that did not carry items he would be interested in. A customer notified staff that my nephew had shoplifted. We were singled out because he and I do not- We were singled out because he and I do not pass. The sad thing is that I had had the conversation with him just prior to entering the store. Although we were under no obligation to do so, I had my nephew turn out his pockets, which contained nothing but his own belongings. No apology was offered. This is just one story. I have also been reprimanded by a customer in a restaurant that I was not properly caring for the children I was charged with as their nanny. You see, I was with my white friend and her children, and the presumption was that I, as a Latina, would serve only one purpose in this dynamic, as this family's nanny. My oldest son is involved in a program called Integrated Work. It is a community-based program, which means that his group spends the entire day in the community. This program serves people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. People with disabilities have a right to live and be included in our community. This is their right. Yet people with disabilities are often singled out and asked to leave businesses, among other bigoted actions. My son faces some barriers in speaking for himself in a meeting like this, though I'm sure you will hear his voice in the future. But I wanted to include his words in my comments tonight, so I asked him about what he wanted everyone to hear from his perspective. And he told me that he wants everything. He wants to be treated like a man when he is in the community because he said, "I am a man." Tonight, I ask you to remember that we are your neighbors, we are your coworkers or employees. Children like mine are your students. They are your children's classmates. We are members of this community, and I ask for all residents of Thousand Oaks to come together and support the city's new equity and inclusion goal so that everyone living here can feel safe, felt welcome and valued. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, Johanna Jones, followed by Lisa Powell and Randall Edwards.
Hi, my name is Johanna Jones. I'm a lifelong resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm also a co-founder of eight oh five resistance. There have been numerous attempts to show and educate all of you on city council on issues of racism and inequity in our community over the past year. I was quite surprised at the last meeting when the T.O. citizens rose up and went ahead and showed you for us. They were great examples of racism and hate in our community. This was a big display of racism in action, and if you have to pause to think about that, I would ask that you go ahead and continue to do the education that we have been asking you to do for a year. I'm hoping that you understand the magnitude and power that you hold by being on city council. Matthew twenty-five forty speaks to do the to the least of these is doing unto God. And you, as a primarily white council, hold the power of marginalized voices in your hands. I ask that you keep this in mind when you're looking at the general plan, when you're looking at affordable housing, when you're looking at zoning, when you're looking at making approval to have an inclusive community. I also ask that you put the formation of a council for equity and inclusion on the agenda. We have been asking for this for a year. This is the place where policies, where decisions can get run through the voices that do not show up at planning commission meetings, that are having a hard time being heard in city council without a bunch of backlash from other T.O. citizens that want to keep our city white. I ask that you take your power, your authority morally and ethically to protect the least of our citizens and to give everybody an equitable voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Powell, followed by Randall Edwards, and then Frida Moreno.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Lisa Powell. I'm a sixteen-year resident of Thousand Oaks. I have many years of experience as a nonprofit program manager, a social worker, and researcher, working with and on behalf of a variety of populations. I was one of the residents who provided comments at the March thirtieth meeting requesting a city goal related to racial equity and justice and was gratified that the city, the council did include a goal on inclusion. After the public comments I witnessed at the last council meeting, I felt the need to speak again tonight. I wanted to assure you all that those of us who have come here to speak about the need for equity and inclusion in city governance are the Thousand Oaks residents. And we are not paid to come here. We aren't radicals or extremists either. Many of those who have shared their stories here have powerful lived experiences that paint a picture of why equity and inclusion is so important, in particular for our communities of color, for immigrant residents, for differently abled communities, our low-income residents, our LGBTQ plus communities, and our seniors. The council's inclusion goal is an excellent first step. There is much to be developed for true impact or change to occur, however. For instance, what are the specific and intended outcomes the city would like to see? How do we measure progress to know that historically underrepresented groups are being included meaningfully and consistently? How have city policies and procedures been examined and adjusted after shining the inclusion and equity light on them? I'd love to see goals and metrics listed on the city website. Some of the specific goals or actions I'd like to see in this area, as I've shared before, include a task force focused on equity issues, a staff liaison position who works with underrepresented groups in the city, and ongoing focused education to help city council members grow their awareness on these issues. I want to talk about racial equity specifically for a moment. The first step to addressing racism, both at the individual level and systemic level, is to talk about it. If we can't even acknowledge that racism exists, how do we solve it? Just because you may not see racism or exclusion yourself doesn't mean it doesn't exist. Including and listening to the experiences of folks with different experiences than yours helps us to del- develop, develop empathy and grapple with our own internal biases. We have to do this internal work, as well as learn about the historical inequities for true change to occur. I believe this is especially important for you, our city leaders, to do this in your role. I again thank my fellow community members for continuing to elevate these critical issues. I see you, I hear you, and I'm grateful to those who are willing to share their stories in this public forum. I hope our city council will do what it needs to do in order to create, in the city's words, "A more equitable, accessible, safe, welcoming, and inclusive government and community here in Thousand Oaks." Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Randall Edwards, followed by Frida Moreno, and then Maria Velasco.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. Most importantly, thank you for establishing the city's number-one priority goal to create a more equitable, accessible, safe, welcoming, and inclusive government and community, regardless of race, color, ethnicity, religion, sex, physical or mental abilities, sexual orientation, gender identity and expression, age, language, education, and/or socioeconomic status. I've lived in Thousand Oaks for twenty-seven years. You've made me prouder than I've ever been to be a member of this community and to have chosen to raise my children here. I am also grateful to those like Ms. Aguilar and Ms. Shelton for sharing their stories here tonight. While the voices of demonization and division threaten to tear our country apart, it is inspiring and a welcome relief that this council represents the voice of reason, of inclusion, of equality, of justice, and of unity. I urge you not to be shaken in your sage commitment to this goal by fear-mongering voices, but to continue with and follow through with this vision, moving us more and more toward that beloved community and more perfect union for which we endeavor.
Thank you. Next, we have Maria Velasco, followed by Linda Carl, and then Effie. Oh, I'm sorry, Frida Moreno? I thought we we just heard from Frida.
Uh, am I unmuted? Sorry?
So Frida Moreno.
Um, am I on mute right now?
No, you we can hear you.
Okay, fantastic. Uh, hello, everyone. My name is Frida Moreno, and I live in Thousand Oaks and attend Thousand Oaks High School. For starters, I would like to thank the city council for making equity and inclusion a top priority in Thousand Oaks. It's become increasingly more apparent that not everyone in our community shares this belief nor understands why such a goal is beneficial for the well-being of our community. And while I completely understand where these dissenters are coming from, subjecting our beloved city to criticism is necessary to promote positive change in Thousand Oaks. It may be difficult for some of us to step outside of our comfort zones and listen to the stories of our fellow neighbors, but this is the first step towards greater change. I would also like to clarify that I am not here to tell my story, simply because I shouldn't have to. It shouldn't have to be my responsibility to provide proof of racial incidents taking place in Thousand Oaks. I am a high schooler in my junior year. Right now, I should be studying, but instead, I have to speak at a city council meeting to address a topic that is by no means new. That being said, as someone who was born and raised in Thousand Oaks, I absolutely love the city and only want what's best for it. Changing Thousand Oaks for the better begins with supporting this movement towards inclusion and equity for all. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you, Frida. Next, we have Maria Velasco, followed by Linda Carl, and then Effie.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña and council members and city staff. My name is Maria Velasco. I am a student at Thousand Oaks High School. I live in Thousand Oaks, and I am a student at the high school. I wanted to thank the city council members for making the equality and inclusion a top goal in our city. Not everyone in our community understands this goal and why it is necessary. That is why I'm sharing my story today. This past weekend, I went to Burlington with some friends. While we were at the checkout line, my friend grabbed some masks, which he later put back on the shelf. As we got to the register, the security guard came up, came up to him, asking where he had put the mask. He even asked him if he had planned to steal the mask. My friend replied with, "No, I put the mask back, back, and I wouldn't steal the mask. I can pay for them." The security guard went up to him because he was Hispanic. The security guard did not go up to anyone else uh, during the checkout. And as the situation continued, the security guard decided to stand right next to my friend. Uh, now that you have heard my story, I hope that uh, I ask you to remember that I am your neighbor and I am a student, your kid's classmate, and I am a coworker or your employee. I am a member of this community, and I ask for all the residents of Thousand Oaks to come together and support the city's new equality and inclusion goal so that everyone growing up here can feel safe and welcomed and valued. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, we have Linda Carl, followed by Effie, and then Barbara Layton.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña, council members and city staff. My name is Linda Carl. My husband purchased our property in the eighties. We did not run away from anywhere then, nor do we plan to run away now. Instead, I want to thank the city council for making equity and inclusion a top goal in our city. Not everyone in our community understands why this goal is necessary, and that is why I am sharing my experiences today. I'd like to start by sharing a quote from Brené Brown. "In order to empathize with someone's experience, you must be willing to believe them as they see and not as you imagine their experience to be." Here is my experience. After many years of living in Thousand Oaks, it doesn't fail that I would enter a retail and not long after, I'll notice someone following me around the store. There is no offer to help, just the close monitoring of my presence inside the business. I have experienced a feeling of being unwelcome extends to my son, who has multiple disabilities and uses a wheelchair. Sometime ago, I took my son to a children's activity at the Civic Cars Plaza. And midway through the program, while there were children moving about up and down the hallways, my non-verbal son and myself were asked to leave because of his vocalizations. If a child is not welcome at a children's program, where can people like my son go to enjoy our beautiful city? Now that you have heard my stories, I'll ask you to remember that we are your neighbors. My children are your students and your kids' classmates. We are members of this community, and I ask for all residents of Thousand Oaks to come together and support the city's new equity and inclusion goal so that everyone growing up here can feel safe, welcome, and valued. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Linda. Next, we have Effie, followed by Barbara Layton, and then Anai Romero.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Effie, and I am a resident of Westlake Village here in the city of Thousand Oaks for over two decades. I am a member of Buendecino, a local nonprofit that works to cultivate equity in our community. I would like to thank the individuals who spoke tonight about their experiences of racism and exclusion in our community. As previous speakers stated, it takes courage to share these traumatic and harmful experiences. I would also like to thank the council for prioritizing to quote, "Create a more equitable, accessible, safe, welcoming, and inclusive government and community," end quote. I have many amazing memories of Thousand Oaks, but I also have memories that show our community must do better. One such memory is one of my earliest, when as a child, an individual came up to me at CVS on Agora Road as my mother and I were speaking Greek. The individual stated to me that I should quote, "Speak English to my mother so she can learn the language," end quote. I was stunned, and as you see, this memory has stayed with me. Another, much more recent incident, happened while I was walking around my neighborhood this past year and heard a neighbor express dissatisfaction that quote, "All the L.A. people are coming here," end quote. From these incidents and the many others that you have heard from our local residents, it is clear that members of our community have different experiences. We must listen and respond with action. Our city is not a closed one. Our city is not only for those who speak English. Our city is not only for people of certain races, backgrounds, and identities. Our city is not only for white individuals or the affluent. Coming to all, and there are actions that have been stated by community members that will help to address the systemic racism in our community. Our community will be better with equity and inclusion as top priorities. Our city is better when progress is made to support those who are calling for their needs to be met. I want the message of my city to be clear. Everyone is welcome here, and it is our city's responsibility to make sure that systemic racism and discrimination are addressed and that equity is not just a statement, but a commitment supported by many continuous actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Effie, and good to hear from you again. Next up, we have Barbara Layton, followed by Anai Romero, and then Peggy Rosenberg.
Hello, my name. Hello, my name is Barbara Layton. I live in Newbury Park. I've been here for over twenty years and visited family here for another twenty years before that. I applaud the city council for making equity and inclusion for all a primary part of our long-term goals. Most of my life was spent with an awareness of racism as something that occurs elsewhere. More recently, I've become aware of the effects of racism that are intertwined throughout our society. I can see how I have benefited. I have not had to spend each day of my life thinking about how to cope with racism. Benefits included access to education, jobs, housing, and a sense of personal autonomy that is often identified as privilege. Some may think that is just the way our culture and economy operate. I believe that perhaps in our enthusiasm to move forward, our country has not taken time to reflect on the impacts of racism throughout our history. Impacts include indigenous genocide, slavery, Jim Crow, mass incarceration, housing restrictions, immigration inequities, implicit bias, and segregated schools, among others. Effects are long-lasting and intertwined throughout. For the sake of my children and all generations to come, I am deeply concerned for the future. Racism is an issue that needs to be intentionally explored and overcome. I would like to see our city have an equity commission to help us meet this important goal of equity and inclusion for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Anai Romero, followed by Timothy. Thank you. Next, we have Anai Romero, followed by Timothy, and then Peggy Rosenberg. It appears that we do not have Anai, so we will then go to Timothy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I had a, I had a little statement written out, but I decided, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna read it. I think, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I think for me, I'm white now. I'm new to Thousand Oaks, about two years. I spent 19 years in Hollywood. I was in the Marine Corps. I've been the minority in Hispanic culture, which I admire, Black culture. Every form of culture that I've been in, I've always, you know, been treated with the politeness, but definitely, you know, they would put their heads down. It's just the way it is. You get along with a few of everything. It doesn't matter if it's a higher-class Beverly Hills or Bel-Air or celebrities. We all deal with racism. It's a spirit. And a commission, they can try. I think it's, it's nice to try to help, but you're not gonna fix it. It's a spirit. And for this whole movement across the United States where we're all awakening, I don't think you have to be intelligent to see that we decimated the natives that were here before us. We have a museum and everything. But at the same time, are we all gonna just go back and continue to pay and continue to pay for something we didn't do? And then we now live in a society and culture where racism is for each... If you go into a stronghold, you will feel racism. You will be the part of that, that joke or that look. It is not because you're white or you're black or because you're Hispanic. I admire all people from every color, religions, whether I believe the same way, LGBTQ. As long as you are not trying to, you're gonna come and condemn us. We're, we've all felt racism. We will all continue to feel racism. It is not right, but you're not gonna stop it. And last thing I'm gonna add is we can help it. But if, if the resistance that 808 talks about justice will not be served until those who are unaffected or as outraged as those who are, we have a Planned Parenthood down the street. We're babies die. We allow so many things to happen that are not right, but they continue on. So we will speak. We will stand against racism. But racism is not from one color. It is a spirit, and we must stop that. And that's gonna take, that's gonna take Jesus coming back, whether you believe or not believe.
Thank you.
And I think for me, thank you for your time and your work, but...
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. I'm sorry, Mr. Hensley, your time is up. Thank you. Next, we have Peggy Rosenberg by phone. And then the last speaker appears to be William Cabrera. Peggy Rosenberg?
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to share my concerns about updating the city's general plan. As a parent, I found that when I wanted to generate a productive and positive discussion about changes I hope to see in our children, I was more successful when I asked them questions intended to elicit their thought and consideration rather than to make statements about what I wanted from them. So I hope that you will hear my questions with an open mind and the intention of giving them serious consideration as you continue to review and move forward regarding the general plan. Have you taken a close, critical look at the survey your constituents provided as a means of gathering feedback to the proposed options? Did you do the survey? If so, did you also find it to be way too long, moved from one point to another too quickly to be read, considered, and answered? Was it user unfriendly and inefficient? Were you booted out of it a time or two? I was disappointed the survey overlooked posing the obvious question, "Do you want this build-out? Can you support any of the options?" Have you found yourself wondering whether a survey with approximately 2,000 responses can come close to being reasonably considered representative of a city of more than 127,000? Does it actually have any value, or is it being used as a tool to satisfy some requirement without being substantive? Thousand Oaks has long been touted as a city of great safety, but do you not recognize that crime levels are known to be higher in areas of greater density? Will you accept a portion of the burden of guilt if you support the creation of high-density growth and the resultant higher crime rates? Has there been an in-depth study of the impact that any of the proposed options will have on the infrastructure of the city? Have you considered the financial impact of the measures necessary to accommodate the traffic, water, and sewer services, as well as the health and emotional impact on city residents? Did you notice that a number of survey responders or virtually verbatim others submitted from supposedly different respondents? Do you think it likely or logical that people around the city would express the same opinions, let alone express them in the same words? Finally, what are your thoughts about what the addition of dwellings exceeding the state requirement will result in down the line? Do you really believe that build-out will stop at fewer than allowed but not required? What are the chances that any of the options presented will allow Thousand Oaks to continue to be the rural suburbia that has drawn all of us here to live despite the higher cost of housing rather than to live in L.A. or the San Fernando Valley? This is, after all, the home of 1,000 oak trees, views of skies and hillsides, fresh air, and the fulfillment of dreams of nearly all of our residents. Please give thought as you answer my questions, not to me, but to yourself. Scrap all three options. Residents don't want any of them at all. Thank you so much for your time. Good evening.
Thank you. Next, we have William Cabrera, and then one more speaker, Jim Anderson. Is it Mr. Ramos or Cabrera?
Ramos.
Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is William Ramos Carrera. I'm a student at Thousand Oaks High School and a member of Latino youth leadership. I would like to start, I'd like to share my experience with racism, as you can tell by my accent. I'm newcomer to this country, but I am very proud of my culture and my roots. While I'm also very grateful for what this country has had to offer me, I recently got a word from Ling Nancer from, from my social class, social science class. And I'm really proud of it because it hasn't been easy, especially during this pandemic and online school. Most of my classmates have been really welcoming towards me. I wish I can say, say all of them had, but I had a very bad experience in campus when others had told me to go back to Mexico. I came to realize while I was at a family dinner one night that this is not the first time my family has experienced, has been discriminated because of our country of origin or the color of our skin. My cousin, who went to Westlake High School and was a class of 2005, experienced the same issues. When they called him Beaner, as you can see, this isn't, this isn't something new. Minorities, this, minorities in this community, in this community for years. Minorities in this community have suffered through many times of discrimination for years now. What is really appealing to me is the lack of knowledge or indifference of some members in the community. It doesn't mean that because you haven't experienced it, it doesn't exist. And I'm really glad you haven't. I can tell that you honestly, it's not a nice feeling to be humiliated because of the color of your skin or because you weren't born here. I hope those members in this community who really think that racism doesn't exist in the city take their time to rethink and learn about it because it is real and it does exist. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Jim Anderson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, actually, my name is Dr. Shawnee Anderson, and I am speaking for my husband, Jim. I am a home and business owner in Thousand Oaks. And actually, many of you know me through my father, Buffalo Bob Records, as he was a former city planner and architect. My family moved to Thousand Oaks in 1968, and I have many fond memories of the former pillars of our community. Francis Prince, Alex Fiori, Dave Irwin, Ed Jones, and many others fighting diligently for slow growth to keep the small-town feel for our Caneo Valley. Adding low-income, high-density housing to our precious community will destroy the vision these legends were committed to for our valley. I left Thousand Oaks for college and graduate school, and when I began a family, I knew I wanted to move out of the city and return to the town where I grew up, as it still had that small-town feel. Many of my contemporaries feel the same. Yet it has saddened us that many of our Caneo Valley traditions have disappeared over the years as our city has grown. Lastly, my son is a survivor of the borderline mass shooting. And while that was one of the worst tragedies our town has ever experienced, we came together as one small town. And I fear that if we continue to expand that sense of community that I have loved my entire life will be gone forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and this concludes public comments. Mr. Powers?
Thanks, Mayor Bill de la Peña. We'll have staff follow up with the gentleman that brought up the cannabis licensing and let him know about our process. The, I'm very excited about the Last Robust Residency Program. We, that's been in the works for quite some time, and to have 20 residents taking, taking up work there is gonna be wonderful. And then finally, I just need to stress, based on a few of the comments, the numbers, 80,000 units was thrown around again. I just need to stress once again that there is no plan for any such number. 80,000 is the number that is the entirety of capacity for our city, including everything that is built today already. Also, I want to remind a lot of the points that were brought up. Once a land use alternative is selected by the city council, that's when they'll undergo the full EIR process. Under that EIR process is where there'll, where there'll be intense study on traffic and on police resources and fire resources and all of the various elements that we've heard about conceiving. That's it for my call.
Thank you. We will now go to our consent calendar. Are there any items which you wish to pull? Asking my colleagues here...
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Could we have a five-minute break before we go to consent items?
Sure. Five-minute break. Is that okay with the rest of the council?
Yes, it is for me.
Good. All right, let's do that then. Thank you. It looks as though we have four of the five back to continue the council meeting, waiting on Councilmember Adam. I was going to go into consent calendar of the four that are present. Do any of you want to, there's Councilmember Adam. Are there any, is there, are there any items which you would like to pull from the consent calendar?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to speak about item seven briefly, so nobody else has any problems, I would move the balance.
Okay, which, which item under consent calendar?
Item F, excuse me.
F, as in Frank?
Yes.
Okay.
F is in Frank. And I'll move the balance if no one else has any questions.
Okay, I don't think anybody has any questions, Madam Clerk? We have a motion to move the consent calendar minus item F.
Okay, Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamy?
Yes.
Councilmember Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
And that motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones, go ahead with item F.
Yeah, just a quick question, I'd like to ask Mr. Finley about the sidewalks. I see we're appropriating money to check them and improve them if they need it. I wonder how you find out? I know we have many, many miles in sidewalks. Do you occasionally have people go out and inspect them to make sure that we find any with dangerous conditions?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Jones. Yes, actually, we go out annually, annually, we have an annual inspection program. We've divided the city into four quadrants, and we take a team out there for several weeks of, and go out and, and go through an entire neighborhood and area and, and note any defects that we find. We also appreciate any residents that call us up and, and give us information about a sidewalk that's uplifted a little bit, so it's, it's an annual, annual event.
Yeah, I noticed if you have any of those that have a uplifted, where two sections of the sidewalk don't exactly meet, does the asphalt, I've seen that some of them have a little strip of asphalt to close up that crack, does that do the job? Does, does that, is that satisfactory in repairing the problem?
The asphalt is a temporary repair until we can get out there and fix it permanently. This, this project is an example of, some of these sidewalk sections probably have asphalt today and will be permanently repaired following this project.
Okay, well, good, I'm glad to hear you're on top of it. I'd like to move then item F, Madam Chair, or Madam Mayor.
Sure, thank you, we have a motion to approve item 7F, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamy?
Yes.
Councilmember Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
And that motion passes 5-0, and your ordinance titles are ordinance amending sections 10-1.703, 10-1.901, 10-1.902, 10-1.908, and 10-1.909 of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code Regarding Billing and Payment Regulations Governing the City's Wastewater Service Charges, and an ordinance granting to California American Water Company the right, privilege, and franchise to construct, use, maintain, and operate pipelines and ordinances for the transmission and distribution of water for any and all purposes in, along, across, upon, and under the public streets and rights of way, as the same now or may hereafter exist within the City of Thousand Oaks.
Thank you, all right, we now go to our first public hearing of the evening, item 8A, and that is our proposed 2021 citywide user fees. And that will be presented by our Finance Director, Ms. Jamie Boscarino.
Madam Mayor, I'll open that hearing for you.
Oh, yes, go ahead, of course.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A, the proposed 2021 citywide user fees, fines, penalties, rates, and assessments, user fees, traffic development impact fees, and police facilities development fee. No individuals have presented speaker cards.
All right, thank you, and now we go to Ms. Boscarino.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight, we're here to hold the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2122 and fiscal year 2223 citywide user fees and development impact fees. A public hearing is required in order to legally establish fees that are charged to the public. The format is similar to the study session that we held last month. This hearing was noticed to the public per requirements in order to be transparent about the topic and discussion, and provide ample notice for interested parties to send in comments or speak tonight. The user fees are a part of the city's proposed fiscal year 2122 and fiscal year 2223 biannual budget process. The proposed user fee manual includes 256 fees with about 650 subcomponent fee items. The fees comprise both development-related user fees as well as non-development fees. The draft user fees were presented to the Finance Audit Committee for review and discussion on March 8th, and the study session was held March 16th. Tonight is the public hearing, and if adopted by City Council, fees will go into effect on July 1st, 2021. Just a reminder that there's a legal difference between a tax and a fee. Proposition 26 established what constitutes a tax, essentially a levy, charge, or exaction that is imposed by a government that doesn't meet one of the seven exceptions set forth in the proposition. A fee, on the other hand, is a rate charged to an individual or group that receives a private benefit from services provided by the city. The user fees manual lists the exception that the fee qualifies under on each of the fee pages. The proposed user fee manual considered tonight is composed of development and non-development user fees. The fees cover services from each department, such as various building permit fees and rental of city facilities. Developer charges are also included, such as development impact fees, which are governed under the Mitigation Fee Act, AB 1600. Fines and penalties, rates and charges for water and wastewater utilities, and assessments for lighting and landscaping are also included. The proposed manual is broken out into six different sections. The first section includes a fee detail sheet for each user fee, which includes a variety of information regarding the fee, including the amount of the fee. The second section includes the comparison of the user fees from the study session, the draft date fees, to the proposed fees tonight. The third section includes City Council exceptions. The fourth section includes non-compliance fees, which are fees charged to users that commenced on their activity prior to receiving approval from the city to do so. The fifth section includes the traffic impact fees, and the sixth section includes resolutions that are recommended to be adopted tonight. As discussed at the study session, a cost of services study was completed for Public Works Engineering fees and CDD planning and code compliance fees. The study showed that a majority of fees are below full-cost recovery, although some fees were actually recommended to be decreased as they were above full-cost recovery. Staff strategy is to increase selected fees by greater than CPI this year, and also in future user fee updates. Staff will conduct a full-cost study for CDD building fees for the next user fee update in two years. In addition, there are City Council exceptions to full-cost recovery for specific fees identified in Section 3. Since we held the study session in March, there have been a few minor revisions to the user fees manual, which I will cover next. Public Works fee PW07 for a grading plan check was revised. The revision caused a new fee PW06B to be added, titled Major Encroachment Permits: Public Improvement Plan Check Over 5,000 Valuation. And the existing fee was retitled to Major Encroachment Permits: Public Improvement Inspections Over 5,000 Valuation. There are four revisions to CDD planning fees. P11A for a Protected Tree Permit, option number five, was adjusted to $300 for consistency purposes across protected tree types. P24 for residential hillside trailer plant to development permit, option number two, was eliminated, the fee will be charged at full cost. P36, pre-application review fee, option number two, was moved to the Landscape Plan Check Fee, P35. P61A, the CCNR staff administrative fee, was moved to P61, and thus, P61A was deleted. Staff's recommendations are to adopt the resolutions approving the 2021 citywide fees, fines, penalties, rates, and assessments with non-compliance fees, adopt the resolution approving the traffic development impact fees, and adopt the resolution approving the police facilities development fee. I want to thank Carrie Matson, Deputy Finance Director, and Brent Zakaida, our Budget Officer from the Finance Department, for their work over the past year on our cost of services study and the user fees. Also, would like to thank staff from all departments, especially Public Works and Community Development. I would be happy to answer any questions, and staff from other departments are also present and available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, appreciated. Are there any questions for our Finance Director, council? No, no questions. We also don't have any public speakers, as was mentioned, so if there is no need for any questions or comments, then I will look for a motion, Mr., oh, Councilmember McNamy, go ahead.
I just want to make a comment here, that a study that came out in the Wall Street Journal a couple of weeks ago pointed out that 24% of the cost of housing is attributed to the permits and fees associated with the federal, state, county, and city governments. And anything we can do on a city level to keep the fees low, to make housing more affordable, is something I could really go for as a option. Now, again, keeping government cost-effective is key to that, because the fees cover the costs of the government, in this case, the city, to issue those permits and requesting the fees associated with them. So the bigger the government gets, the more expensive our city government becomes, the more those fees go up. So if you want to do something significant to help keep the costs of housing down by reducing 24% of the housing costs, anything we can do to make government more efficient, I would applaud that effort upon my fellow council members to do so. That was the only comment I wished to make.
Thank you, Councilmember McNamy, appreciate that. Any other comments or questions? None? How about a motion? Oh, first, I need to, we, 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 we. Sorry, sorry, I forgot to close the public hearing, I need to close the public hearing officially. And now that it is closed, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Yes, I see we have many resolutions, so I'll simply move that we approve the recommended actions.
Recommendations 1, 2, and 3 for item 8A. Very good, excellent. Then, Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamy?
Yes.
Councilmember Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill de la Peña?
And that is a yes?
And that motion carries 5-0.
Excellent, we move on to department reports, item 9A, residential capacity allocation and initiation of a general plan amendment. The applicant is Amgen, and that will be started off with Senior Planner Carlos Contreras. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Give me one second while I bring up the presentation. I'm having difficulty sharing the, give me one second here, very sorry about this. I do not know why the PowerPoint is not presenting.
While we wait for the screen sharing, we do have several public speakers on this item 9A. I count eight speakers so far.
Okay, Madam Mayor, thank you very much for your, for being here tonight. Councilmembers and members of the public, the project before you tonight is a request to allocate residential capacity and initiate a general plan amendment to allocate 246 residential units for a mixed-use and multifamily residential concept located at 1250 West, West Hillcrest Drive. The request consists of the following. Initiate the general plan amendment for Measure E allotment of 246 residential units. Allocate concurrent processing of entitlement applications in conjunction with legislative actions. In this case, legislative actions include the allocation of the units, and also evaluate the proposed concept based on the new simplified prescreen criteria adopted by City Council in December of 2020. As Sapp has mentioned before, and as you may be aware, the prescreen process essentially serves as a tool necessary to allocate the requested 246 Measure E units before you tonight. So what is this prescreen process? It's an evaluation of the proposed concept against adopted city criteria, and a required step to allocate the requested Measure E units. The current refined prescreen process calls for a conceptual level review based on land use to determine whether the site should be allocated units. In this case, a mixed-use and multifamily residential, residential concept requesting 246 Measure E units. Please note that tonight's action is not approving the project, just allowing the concept to proceed with the review and evaluation associated with the submittal of a formal application. Also, this action does not guarantee that the project will be approved during the formal review process, as a project will be further evaluated and considered by the Planning Commission and City Council. The applicant has 12 months to submit the formal application, and it should be known that the project may be modified between now and the submittal of a formal application. It should be noted that these concepts get further refined to meet city development standards, codes, and policies. Here's the review process, and it's provided graphically to better illustrate where the project stands to date. These are the many steps in the planning and development process. Today, we are in the yellow category, which is the prescreen. This is the very initial step of the process. If the requested units are allocated, the next step is the pre-application to iron out development standards and other project specifics. Then follows a formal development application. That will be reviewed for conformance, and thereafter, the environmental analysis that will be reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. At the end of this process, the Planning Commission would review and evaluate the project, hold public hearings, and make a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council would then hold a public hearing and take final action on the proposal. Again, should the City Council allocate the units tonight, the council will get another opportunity to reevaluate the proposal for final review and consideration. As previously mentioned, the prescreen is a required step for the allocation of the Measure E units. The process adopted by City Council this past December involves the evaluation of of the design concept according to predefined criteria. This criteria outlined here serves to determine whether the concept before you tonight warrants the allocation of the requested 246 Measure E units. This process allows the council to comment on the concept and its components early in the evaluation process. The evaluation criteria detailed in the staff report is as follows. The project setting, that is a concept design based on the proposed location, the quality of the concept plan, the regional housing needs assessment as it relates to affordable units, and finally, concept features that are provided for community benefit. The proposed design concept consists of the following. An 8.2-acre site that will serve An 8.2 acre site that will serve as the site for the mixed-use and multifamily residential concept. The concept consists of six total buildings, of which one is mixed-use, and the other five are multifamily residential. The concept includes one semi-subterranean podium-style parking structure and surface parking throughout the site. A total of 333 residential units are proposed, and of those, 246 are Measure E units. The 246 unit count is based on the 8.2 acre site multiplied by 30 units to the acre. This concept includes a 35% density bonus, which nets an additional 87 units to this concept. In order for the applicant to obtain those 87 density bonus units, the applicant will either include 28 affordable units in the very-low-income category or 50 in the low-income category. Here is an aerial photograph of the subject site, and this is its current condition. The site consists of a, again, of a 8.2 acre parcel outlined in red. The site is located north of the 101 freeway and immediately south of West Hillcrest Drive. The site is currently improved with a 55,000-square-foot two-story commercial office building, and associated development includes existing landscaping, hardscape walls, and surface parking. It appears that the site supports oak trees. However, impacts to these oak trees are not specifically known at this time. The new prescreen process adopted by City Council last December does not require a tree report or other technical studies at this time. However, city policies require evaluation of projects in an effort to protect and preserve these oak trees. Should the Council allocate their units tonight, and with the submittal of a formal application, technical studies will be required, including a tree report and basically an assessment of tree impacts, the work methods, monitoring, and protection standards. But that will all be determined at a later date if there's a formal application submitted. Here is a photograph of the subject property to give you an idea of existing conditions. This photograph was taken from West Hillcrest Drive. It's looking towards the southwest. To the left, you have the existing building, two stories, approximately 55,000 square feet. And as you can see along Hillcrest Drive, you have existing mature landscaping. And you also have a bike lane along Hillcrest Drive demonstrated in the blue arrow. Here is a photograph of the subject property as seen from the 101 freeway. As the red arrow indicates, that is a two-story structure that's existing on the subject property, and there is a lot of mature landscaping existing along the 101 freeway. Here's an illustration of the proposed concept. As shown here, the concept involves one mixed-use building located along West Hillcrest Drive, and is outlined here in purple. And the five multifamily residential buildings are located on the southern or rear portion of the site, outlined in orange. The concept includes 10,000 square feet of commercial to be located within the mixed-use component of the concept. The proposed mixed-use building is primarily three stories, and the multifamily residential buildings at the rear are a mix of three and four stories. As shown here by the green arrows, primary vehicle access is provided along West Hillcrest Drive. The site is limited to West Hillcrest Drive due to the size proximity to the 101 freeway off-ramp. An interior access road bisects the mixed-use and residential components and is labeled at the center of the site in red. The concept includes podium-style parking to be located under the multifamily residential component of the concept. The entrance is identified in the blue arrow. Although the podium parking will serve both the mixed-use and multifamily residential uses, additional surface parking will be provided throughout the site. The final parking supply will be determined by parking required for the total number of residential units and commercial area that will be provided as we finalize the concept. Parking requirements will be based on the Thousand Oaks municipal code and also state law. Other concept features include private green space, pedestrian pathways, including outdoor seating, and podium courtyards. The applicant has stated that the concept would include a public plaza to be located at the northwestern portion of the subject site that will be for use by the public, and it's outlined here in the dash green circle. The concept includes a clubhouse and gym, and I outlined it here in yellow. Other design components include a common open space, pool, and rooftop terraces. The site is identified here and outlined in red, and surrounding land uses consist of industrial to the northwest, commercial to the west, and residential, multifamily residential uses to the east. The proposed concept will provide workforce housing in this area in that an industrial biotech complex, commonly known as the Amgen campus, exists directly to the north, and nearby industrial and commercial development provide job opportunities. Various surrounding uses and services include, but are included and are not limited to, food, grocery, entertainment, professional offices, personal services, and other retail uses. Additionally, the site is near several bus stops, and as indicated here by the blue dash, sorry, by the blue circles. These bus stops are within 400 feet of the site, and additional bus stops are located within half a mile. The nearby public transit will provide service connections to the Thousand Oaks Transit Center. The subject site is also surrounded by existing bicycle lanes along West Hillcrest Drive and also Rancho Canejo Road within that right-of-way. And access to the 101 freeway is directly adjacent to the southwest. As far as regional housing needs, 246 units will be counted toward satisfying the city's sixth RENA cycle. That period is from 2021 to 2029. The city has an unmet need, and that is of 733 very-low and 493 low-level units. As I mentioned earlier, the 246 units that the concept will provide will include either one of the following. Option A, which includes 28 affordable units, which translates to 11% of affordable at the very-low-income category, or Option B, which is 50% sorry, 50 affordable units at 20% affordable at the low-income category. The final determination will be based on qualifying for a 35% density bonus in accordance with the State of California Density Bonus Law. So basically here, the applicant, in order to obtain the 35% density bonus and obtain those 87 units, would either include 28 affordable units, that is 11%, or 50 units, which is 20%. Staff would like to note that, as mentioned in the previous prescreen request, density bonus units are not above the housing contemplated by the general plan and are therefore not subject to nor account against the Measure E capacity. As far as the next steps, if the City Council approves the request tonight, the applicant will then revise the project plans based on the comments that are provided by the Council tonight, and then submit a pre-application. After that, the applicant will need to submit a formal application on or before April 27 of 2022. Formal applications include, but are not limited to, a general plan amendment, a zone change, a specific plan, a development permit, among others. Sapp would like to note that through the formal review process, other city departments and agencies will be required to review the project and provide recommendations, conditions, and approval. The formal application would then require review and approval by both the Planning Commission and the City Council. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council provide direction to either one, adopt a resolution to initiate the general plan amendment to allocate the 246 units that are being requested tonight and allow concurrent processing, or deny the application for the allocation of the 246 units. That concludes Sapp's presentation, and I am available for any questions that the Council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Contreras, for this very good presentation. Obviously, this plan has been quite a few years in the making, and it is one of those opportunity sites for Amgen itself, which is trying to try to vitalize that particular area, the industrial area, and also provide services such as a hotel, which is desperately needed in that area. So let's see what my council colleagues have, whether they have any questions.
Madam Mayor, I think Kelvin Parker had just a couple additional points and wanted to give him a chance.
I see, okay. And then I see hands up by Commissioner, not Commissioner, but Councilmember McNamie, followed by Mr. Adam. Go ahead, Mr. Parker.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to add that this is just one of the concepts that could ultimately end up being placed on this site. The applicant in this instance, Amgen, has not yet found a development partner to develop the site. So there is potential for the commercial aspect of that site to actually change. What we're doing here tonight in improving this concept, if that's what the Council decides to do, is just setting an upper limit for the residential component of this mixed-use project. What the ultimate site plan will be in the form may actually change as they continue through the development process, if given the green light this evening by City Council. So what it is you're really witnessing here is just a unique partnership between Amgen and the city to work together on a concept that will be right in this particular location and fits their business needs as well as that of the community.
Absolutely, yes. Makes sense. Councilmember McNamie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few questions for staff, and I don't know if Amgen is on board to perhaps address I've got four questions.
Yes, we have, yeah, we do have representatives from Amgen here this evening.
Excellent. I applaud Amgen's effort to do this. I want to make certain that we're clear that they're doing something similar to what Facebook and Google has done in the Bay Area to attract talent and keep talent at their company here in Thousand Oaks, and that they provide housing for them as a company per incentive, bonus, whatever that you want to call it. Because Facebook and Google have done this in the Bay Area. It's been quite successful, so that way they don't have a housing issue when they bring in talent. Is that part of the intent in that we can house some of your future employees here?
That would be a question for the applicant, and I believe that Colby Allen will be speaking, and that Mr. Matt Welsh will be available for questions, along with two others, Andrew Fogg and Greg Mintz, and Michael Militello. Not sure if we have everybody here this evening, but that's the list that I have in front of me.
Would you like? Madam Mayor, I was going to suggest perhaps having Amgen give their brief piece, and that might help answer some of those additional questions before we come back around to council.
Yes, okay. Before the applicant, I just wanted to see if there are any questions. Mr. Adam?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I think Mr. Parker's right, this project could morph into something completely different than what we're looking at tonight. As was mentioned, a hotel has been suggested at one time or another. But what we're looking at tonight is an effort by Amgen to put something together to market the property. But what we are looking at tonight, I do have a question. The applicant is applying for the density bonus per California state law. So the affordable that they are proposing, is that the minimum amount that would go with the density bonus that they're applying for?
That would be a question for the applicant, who is here, who can probably answer that.
I think Mr. Contreras would know that, wouldn't he?
Yes, I can briefly answer that, and we can also have the applicant add to it. Yes, the applicant is proposing the minimum necessary of affordable units, either through Option A, which is the 28 affordable units in the very-low-income category, or Option B, as I mentioned earlier, which is the 50 affordable units to get that 35% density bonus.
All right, yeah, that's what I was getting at, it's the minimum amount, and that's fine. The second question would be, with this business of either 28 units of very-low or 50 units of low, is that an either-or proposition, or is, can there be some sort of a blend of the two?
I'll go, very good question, Councilmember. I'll go ahead and let the applicant discuss a little bit further, but I believe that there is a ability to have a mix of both, very-low and low-income affordable units, to still obtain that density bonus.
And if I just may add to that, Councilman, the state density bonus law has a sliding scale in the level of affordability based on the level of income of the unit. The lower the affordability, the less units one would have to provide. The higher the level of affordability, the more units you would have to provide in order to qualify for that 35% density bonus. We have seen projects here in town where there's been a mix of multiple affordable levels, and we can continue to work with the applicant as they move forward in the process on that.
Okay, yeah, I would assume that we could put together a mix, I just wanted to be sure, because as we all know, we have a dearth of the very-low income, but we also are shy on the low income as well. It just, and of course, with this piece so close to Amgen, it seems to me there's a great opportunity here for some workforce housing that would certainly benefit the Amgen Corporation. Just one other quick question, as in maybe an opinion from Mr. Parker, is there a optimal blend that you would see here for this piece?
We really would have to see who the ultimate developer is for the site and work with them to achieve the city goals as well as their goals together. It's a little too early in the process to tell how that would end up, but it's certainly, we would like to see something that satisfied our two most areas of need, which are in the very-low and the low-income category.
Yes, all right, thanks, Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNamie, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was kind of skipped over because I did have some questions specifically for staff, so if I may come back, that would be good. I want to ask Mr. Contreras and Mr. Parker if you have a height limit here as to how tall will these buildings be with the density bonuses and so forth? Can you give me an idea as to how high we're going to look at here?
Well, currently, with the current zoning, the height limit's 35 feet. Once the applicant finds a development partner and submits a project to move forward, we will evaluate that through the development process, as we do with any project, and come together with options on what that would look like and what the ultimate height would be. At this early phase, it's too early to tell what that would ultimately look like.
Okay, thank you.
To just give you some perspectives, this is right adjacent to the Amgen campus, where they do have buildings that have substantial height there in terms of other areas in the city, and that's the result of Amgen being in a specific plan. So they do have custom zoning. So if there were something there that was, say, slightly above 35 feet, then architecture would have to be taken into account to make sure it blends in with the area. That will take into account that it is adjacent to the freeway, which does create a little bit of a topography difference that has to be considered as well.
Great. One other question, I believe, which would be a staff question, is that as I look at parking for the residents that are there, some quick math here. I have 333 units. If we do two cars per unit, 666 cars on that particular site. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Parker, is that state says for one bedroom is 1.6 parking spaces per every one unit, even though two cars will most likely be parked somewhere for the residents? That's leaving 0.4, which gives me 266 cars, which is 4,799 feet, and that would be equivalent to approximately 15 football fields long. That parking on the street would have to be accommodated if that's not actually on-site for two parking spaces per one bedroom. Is that some correct math and analysis on that?
Thank you for that. I guess it's a back-of-the-napkin calculation, but it seems pretty in-depth in terms of how you calculated it. In terms of this particular project, that's something that we can work with the developer who ultimately purchases this site on providing adequate parking to serve the needs of the resident. Being that it's going to be a mixed-use concept, there will be some economies of scale that could be recognized in terms of mixing those two uses together. But regardless of what the state law may require, that's a conversation that we definitely can have with the applicant as it moves through the development process. And we've been fairly successful with that and other projects in the city in recent times here.
So what I'm hearing from you, though, with one of your statements in there, is that, again, this property, so the public understands, used to be owned by the city, used to be a city hall. It was purchased by Amgen, sold to them by the city. City, Amgen now owns it, it's being developed or wants to be developed. Are you telling me then Amgen will not retain ownership of it? They'll be selling it over to a developer, is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct. We're partnering with Amgen to get a project that fits the city's needs, as well as what Amgen would need moving forward with the project. But we do have the unique opportunity to have some control over what goes on that site, and in partnering with Amgen, who we've worked with many times before in other instances, we feel pretty good about the prospect of a development moving forward there that the City Council would ultimately be comfortable with.
The reason why I'm asking is that, again, if Amgen owned that property, they would have more control over workforce housing, but also makes Amgen more part of this community to keep them here if they own that facility. So they are going to be turning it over to a developer and selling it to them at some point down the road. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
And we also have a question. And we also have a question from Mayor Pro Tem Bob Engler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, this question is for staff. I think the, the, the proposal coming to, to us tonight is a little bit nebulous in terms of what we might expect, say, a year or so from now, once, uh, things are a little more settled. Um, what, what are the types of, um, uses that, that can be, we can anticipate seeing in, in this mixed use? In other words, a commercial, residential? And secondarily, if, if the, uh, use of that property turns more toward a hotel or a short-term rental, uh, location, uh, what becomes of the allocation of units that we are putting out?
So I'll start that answer, and the applicant can follow up with it, um, probably shortly after their presentation. But the residential units would remain on-site at the cap that the city council would set at this particular meeting. In terms of the commercial portion, when a property's on commercial, any use that's allowed in our zoning code in the commercial land use category could go there. If it's a hotel, that would be the use. It could be commercial, such as restaurant or pad tenants, that could serve this particular site. It, it, it's just the number of commercial uses that could go in there. Ideally, given its location and its proximity to the Amgen, it would be something in the neighborhood of hospitality to help serve the residents out there, uh, the workers who come to the area.
Thank you.
And, and if I, if I can just briefly add to that, I mean, the, the subject property is Zone C3, so we would look at, um, the list of permitted uses within the C3 zone, which would be uses that would be compatible with the surrounding areas.
Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, uh, just a couple of questions. Uh, one of them is relative to the, uh, general plan exercise that we're going through right now. I watched a little of the planning commission last night, and one of the things I remember is that when they were going east to west about the possible, uh, plans, uh, to recommend, when they, uh, talked about the Baxter property, that we have given the green light, uh, to, to move forward with their plans for, uh, residential, they automatically, uh, said that that was residential in the general plan. My point is that the action that we're taking here tonight, is, is that going to have an influence on what the general plan update, uh, eventually comes up with? In other words, if we go ahead with residential, are they gonna do in the, uh, plan that they eventually, uh, come forward with? Are they gonna just say, well, the council gave this project, uh, the green light tonight, so therefore, we'll just designate it as residential? Is that a, is that a problem?
Madam Mayor, I can answer that question.
Go ahead.
Council member Jones. So with respect to the Baxter property, again, the, the, the preferred land use map identifies it as industrial. Um, staff acknowledged that there's a pre-screen application that was approved by the city council that would designate a portion of it for residential, actually for mixed use. However, the applicant is processing that, and to the extent council formally approves a project, then that would change the land use designation on the general plan, land use map. But as, as presented at the planning commission or as presented to the public, it is being proposed for an industrial designation. The same would occur with it in, with this case. So the fact that the city council approves a pre-screen, um, it, you know, th- these pre-screens will likely, most likely be processed to completion prior to final adoption of the general plan and the land use map. So if city council approves this project, in, in not the pre-screen, but the actual project, then the land use map will reflect the new land use designation.
Well, what do you think is, uh, uh, it would be the, uh, effect or the implication of this action on the process as it's going forward? In other words, if I understood last night, that the planning commission simply said, well, I guess the city wants Baxter to be residential or, you know, mixed use or part resi- whatever they said. So they said, well, we'll, we'll put it that way on the general plan. Is, is what we do right now going to affect, do you believe, the final determination of the general plan update for that property?
Well, again, ultimately, you five are the decision-makers on the land use map. It, it, so ultimately, you guys decide what, what that land is gonna be designated. You control not only the project, but also the ultimate land use designation. This is no different than, you know, prior to the pre-screen process, every city has what's called an initiation of a general plan amendment. Every city has one of those, and it's basically, um, they appear before the city council. It used to be they would just write a letter saying, hey, we're thinking of doing something on our project, on our property, um, and we're thinking, you know, we'd like to initiate a general plan amendment to consider changing the land use designation from X to Y. And cities process those all the time, and every applicant, every developer knows that there are risks, that it's not a guarantee that the project will be approved. It's basically just a green light to allow an applicant to process a project that is inconsistent with the current land use designation. Ultimately, city council, however, decides whether or not that project will be approved. And part of that project approval includes a land use change if it is approved. So with respect to the overall general plan process, again, these projects, by being processed in this manner, provides a lot more control for city council, and actually brings both the applicant and the city to the table to work out, you know, a project that we think is beneficial to both the applicant and the community, rather than waiting until a, a formal general plan is adopted. Again, these should be processed prior to formal adoption of the general plan.
So you're saying whatever?
I answered your question.
Yeah, well, I understand, we have the final say, and
Yes.
So whatever the planning commission recommends, we still have the freedom to make the final decision. I think that's what you're saying.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. Uh, the other question I have is, this, uh, 246 units, and, and I understand that could be increased, is that right, uh, with the density bonuses? Or is 246 the maximum with the density bonuses?
246 is the maximum Measure E unit allocation for the project. With density bonus, it would be a total project of 333 units.
Well, if, if that were approved, uh, and the council later say we approved that in the general plan, and the council later, uh, decided that that was too many units, uh, would we have the freedom to lessen the number of units when we approved the project?
I- in terms of the general plan?
No, no, when we finally get a project, if we approve this in the general plan, that they can have 246 plus the others for 333, it, it, does that then give them that right, uh, when they come before us for their final approval of the project? Or can you give them less than that?
What it gives them is the maximum envelope of the two numbers that you mentioned before, a Measure E unit allocation of 246. With the density bonus applied, that's roughly where they would come in on the upper end of that. What the project ultimately looks like as it goes through the process would be subject to final city council approval.
In other words, we could lessen, if they come in with more, say they're within this scope, what is, I see before me right now, and they come in, uh, in that ballpark, uh, could we still lessen the number if we think that's too dense at the time we approve the project?
It, it's a discussion that you can have at that time. They would have the maximum right to build that number of units.
It's, it's very similar, council member Jones, to the IMT project on Hampshire, where we, 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 city council approved a maximum allocation, however, the applicant has, um, in their negotiations with the city, has chosen to reduce some of the, the density on that project. However, the allocation is for the maximum amount.
Well, I, maybe I'm a little dense, but, but if we approve this tonight, are we giving them the ability to have 333 units that we cannot retract?
Again, this is a general, that, there's legislative decisions attached to this and a development agreement. This is different than traditional land use development, residential development with, where it already has a land use designation for residential. You have a willing applicant who's coming to the table that wants to negotiate with the city to create a project. So there's going to be give and take by both the city and by the applicant.
But if in the give and take, we decide this is a little too dense, do we have the ability to retract it and lower it?
The city council always has the authority to deny the project or to negotiate a lower amount. There, that's always in the, at this point, with this type of a, a pre-screen and a development agreement, we have maximum flexibility. If the property is ultimately, um, designated for residential, then that flexibility is diminished.
So council member Jones, if I might, um, jump in, the, a- as we laid out in the process, generally speaking, what you're giving tonight would be the ceiling. It gives an envelope in which to work, and, um, as the project moves forward through a process, the environmental work, work with staff, um, the pre-app process, the planning commission process, back to city council, what we find is project refinement. In this case, it's very unique because there's not actually a developer attached to the project yet. So we're gonna have the rare opportunity to partner with Amgen to talk to those developers that are coming forward considering purchasing or acquiring the property in some manner. So in doing that, we'll have a chance to really shape what happens. One example that might be beneficial is the Kmart site. You may have read that, uh, Kmart, uh, um, the IMT project that's been moving forward, um, you gave a unit count. That unit count, I don't remember it off the top of my head, but it's come down, uh,
A tiny bit.
Um, not an insignificant number, uh, since its origination. So you gave a unit count, they began refining the project, going through the environmental, and they're gonna continue to work through that refinement as they move through, coming closer to planning commission and back to the city council.
Well, uh, without prolonging this, it sounds like our ultimate decision is that they could go and head and request this high number. Uh, our alternative would be just simply to turn down the project, would that be it? If it was, in other words, we couldn't lower the number of units, but we could turn down the project if we didn't like the number of units. Isn't that what you're saying?
Again, it, this, with this type of a, a process, we're negotiating a development agreement with them, so we have much more flexibility and control.
Thank you.
Mr. Powers, uh, sorry, I didn't realize my mic was on, didn't mean to.
No worries.
Um, I think it's best right now to go to the applicant, Mr. Colby, uh, Allen, and then we also have the architect available to, for questions, Keith McCloskey, and I think Matthew Welch is also, Welch is also with us this evening. So, um, Mr. Allen, go ahead.
Good evening, is, is microphone working, and can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes, if we see you and hear you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor, city council, and the city staff for your support and partnership in this pre-screen application process. I'm Colby Allen, I'm the director of global real estate at Amgen. Joining me tonight are Matthew Welch from Amgen, Keith McCloskey and team from KTGY Architecture and Planning, and Andrew Fogg from Cox Castle Nicholson, to discuss the proposed land use for 2150 Hillcrest in Thousand Oaks. We're excited to present one possibility, a conceptual design, uh, to contribute to the overall need for mixed-use development in the city and positioning this property to go to market. 2150 Hillcrest is a legacy office building outside of the main Amgen campus. It's a non-core real estate asset in our operations. We're seeking an allocation of residential density to allow the city of Thousand Oaks and a future developer the widest range of options to enable a future fixed-use development. Those options could include hotel, retail, commercial, and residential, and any number of concept designs, which matches the highest and best use for the parcel and for the community. I'd now like to turn it over to Keith McCloskey from KTGY to walk us through the presentation.
Thank you, Colby, and good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Um, I'd be happy to walk through a little bit more of the details of the plan, uh, if staff could share the, the site plan on the screen, I could, uh, speak to some of the, the planning concepts that we've, uh, put forward tonight.
Uh, yeah, yes, give me one second, I'll share. Go ahead and share the screen.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, there you go.
As a, in working with Amgen to develop an idea or a concept for this site, um, we looked at a number of different, uh, ways to integrate a mixed-use, um, delivery here in terms of, uh, different programs and land uses for the site. Ultimately, what we arrived at as really the highest and best use for the site was a mix of, um, some ground floor commercial, um, with an idea that that ground floor commercial that's along Hillcrest Drive, uh, adjacent to the west edge by the existing gas station, and kind of running along the perimeter, um, of the north property line there along Hillcrest, Hillcrest would be, uh, predominantly food and beverage related is kind of our target, um, with housing above. And so this structure would have most of its parking all concealed within it, and we'd have some overflow parking for convenience for some of the folks coming, uh, to visit the project or customers for the commercial, um, on both sides of, of the site. And then on the Hillcrest Drive side, we've got a very deep, kind of 40-foot-deep linear landscape area that we'd like to try and, and maintain. Um, there's a lot of existing mature trees in there, planting. We imagine that we would, um, create some connections into the commercial spaces along there potentially, and, um, make it very pedestrian-friendly along that edge. And then the bulk of the housing would really be behind that mixed-use building. So, uh, that three-story building, um, would likely be able to house, um, portion of the units there with the interior access road that's shown there, kind of bisecting the two buildings and becoming kind of a central boulevard between the two projects. And then the rest of the residential would be split into a series of those five other smaller buildings that Carlos has mentioned in terms of courtyard-style buildings that would all be essentially daylit on grade. So from the perspective of somebody walking into this, um, development or driving through it, all of it would basically be landscaped courtyards that basically permeate through that and out onto the road. Um, this was a concept that we pursued with Amgen in order to really provide a, a use that broke down the scale into more residential, um, buildings that, uh, felt compatible with the neighboring high-density residential areas in and around, um, to the west, uh, to, to the east, sorry. And then, um, with some of those existing trees that are on that, um, east property line and some of the surface parking, we're able to create a really nice buffer separation between any of the re- new residential buildings and the existing residential, um, that's just east of the site. And so from the, uh, freeway side, as one is going down the off-ramp, there's a nice dense grove of some eucalyptus and some other trees through the area that, I think, to the extent possible, you know, the goal would be to try and preserve as many of those as, as we can, and really use that as a buffer to screen the project. Uh, in the slide that was shown earlier by staff, uh, there were some peek-a-boo views of architecture on the site, uh, the existing two-story building, and our vision is that once this is built out, it would be very similar, a lot of screening from the freeway side on the south, and as you're coming down the off-ramp, um, you'd start to reveal some views of the new structure. But to the extent possible, you know, this would be, uh, new development that would consist of some nice food and beverage uses on the ground floor, and then distributing the remainder of the residential units throughout the project. And so while this is, uh, the scheme that we landed on for discussion tonight, you know, we're certainly open to see how the ideas that, um, the community has and the future partner or developer that comes on board to develop this, um, how it evolves over time. We can imagine it being a number of different uses, but, um, to some degree involving residential and, uh, commercial is shown here tonight. So we're happy to answer any questions specifically about density bonus or parking or other, um, goals that the project would pursue as it moves forward through the process.
Thank you, Mr. McCloskey. Thank you, Mr. McCloskey. We did have a question from Councilmember Adam regarding the low-income housing and whether you would be amenable to whoever the applicant will be, provide a mixture. Mr. Adam?
Yeah, if I could address that for Mr. Adam. Essentially, what we would do as part of the development agreement is work with city staff and council to essentially agree to a number of units in either category, likely low or very low, as Carlos mentioned. Those numbers could be blended in a fashion where we could meet the needs of the city's Rina goals based on providing some balance of the two. So through the development agreement process, we could arrive at that final percentage of each.
And then we have a question from Councilmember McNamie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me come back to a couple of questions that pertain to direction. Is this property that's going to be developed going to have workforce housing for the Amgen employees as either a way of inducing talent to come to Thousand Oaks and stay at the location there across the street from Amgen? Whoever wishes to answer is up to you. Mr. McCloskey, Mr. Allen, it's up to you. Oh, your silence.
Hi there. So while housing is of interest to many Amgen employees, I think a residential housing opportunity in such close proximity would be attractive to Amgen employees. We've talked about this concept and we think that working with a developer and working with the partners there with the city planning commission and with the city to enable something that benefits the overall community at that corner would be the best and highest use. I don't think that we've contemplated direct Amgen housing for this facility, but we think that something that benefits everyone in the community, including housing, would be attractive to our Amgen staff.
Thank you. What I'm looking for is more of a commitment from Amgen to maintain its roots and not move to Tampa, Florida, as many of the employees have either left or lost their jobs there at Amgen. By Amgen maintaining control over this and make it workforce housing to attract and keep talent would deepen the roots for Amgen and our community. And I'm just acknowledging that you're making a choice here to take the property, get it under the pre-screen underway, and bring in the developer who's looking at taking and purchasing it from Amgen. So that's just the reality of what we're looking at at this point. Is that a fair statement?
I understand. I understand, Mr. McNamie. Yes.
So, yes, okay, good. Second is the parking issue. And again, as I went through my back of envelope real quick, calculations with 333 units, all said and done at 1.6 parking spaces, I'm left with approximately 16 football field long of cars parked end to end. Where are we going to put them? And that's been my complaint with many of the proposals coming through council here to approve for pre-screens up to date, is that Sacramento has told the cities 1.6 is more than adequate, thinking people are not going to use their car if they don't have adequate parking wherever they live. Therefore, they'll take public transportation to work. But you and I, and I'm sure everyone listening, acknowledges that we in the South Land area, from Santa Barbara to San Diego, all the way to Riverside, we are dependent on our vehicles. And by not having adequate parking on any site that's going to be developed here in Thousand Oaks, we'll put them on the streets, making it more difficult for retailers to have customers come in, plus crime issues where people are walking back to their homes late at night after a shift or work, a woman being raped or murdered, robbed. That's what I'm trying to avoid by having security through adequate parking. What is Amgen's vision here to say, yes, that city minimum or the state minimum of 1.6 is nice, but we're going to put two parking spaces for every one bedroom? What is your thoughts on that? Again, silence. Anyone want to jump on that one? Mr. McCloskey, Mr. Allen, anyone?
Yeah, I can address that. And Andrew, if you'd like to chime in as well, please feel free. But one thing I would say is that any multifamily developer relies on a good parking ratio to make their project marketable, to rent the units and to sustain units. And as we've worked with many other developers within Thousand Oaks to arrive at what that correct parking ratio is, we do that in tandem with the developer and with the city staff to make sure that they understand the types of units that are being delivered, the anticipated number of residents that would be in each unit, and can adequately provide parking. So whether that means that the future developer that comes to develop this would provide an extra half level of sub-parking because that's what they'd like to see for the right unit mix and what makes city council happy with the ratios, that's something that will continue to resolve as the project moves forward.
Well, thank you, Mr. McCloskey. I look forward to what wind-ups appearing here before council with whatever developer you select and make some choices whether it meets the needs for the city. But I thank you very much for your answer. Madam Mayor, yours. I'll thank you.
Thank you. We do have a couple of speakers, but I wanted to ask questions. The property is, of course, abutted by High Density Residential, which is primarily condominiums. And there is already a lot of street parking up and down Hillcrest Drive, as well as a couple of streets over from your property. And the streets are completely packed with cars parked in the street. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, that with this particular proposal, parking will probably require a little bit closer attention. And then, of course, then there is the issue of building height. You're surrounded by commercial areas where I believe there are at 35 feet. Amgen, of course, being in a specific plan, has some buildings which are 75 feet tall further in. So I wanted to just hear from you that the building height wouldn't exceed that of surrounding buildings, especially since it will be right next to family housing. Mr. McCloskey?
What I can say on building height is that as the project develops and refines, what we would do is ensure that the appropriate building height goes into the design at the appropriate locations. And so in some cases, rather than having a three-story building that's 35 feet everywhere, there may be some elements that step down, and some of that may get pushed up somewhere else where it's less apparent to observers from outside the project. So without committing to a specific height limit tonight, what we can say is that we will continue to work with staff throughout the development of the project to make sure that height is done respectfully of, you know, the various vantage points of the project and done in a way that is done respective of the neighbors on all sides of the project. But I think part of that will come through the further enhancement and refinements of the project as it moves forward.
Thank you. And with that, I would like to call on our public speakers before it gets too late. It's nine o'clock. The first one is Jackson Piper, and our second one is Roseanne Witt. Mr. Piper?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, members of the city council. I don't want to repeat points that I've repeated ad nauseam on previous pre-screens and previous project reviews. I'll try and make this brief and just say that, you know, housing is desperately needed throughout California, even in Ventura County, even in Thousand Oaks. And this project site is 8.2 acres, which means it's a large site. And it would provide 333 total housing units spread across those 8.2 acres, including 28 units very low income or 50 units of low-income housing. That would be a great benefit to the community. It's adjacent to transit and it's right across Hillcrest Drive from Amgen's campus. So this is an ideal spot for there to be density and there to be a lot of housing. And I don't think 35 feet should be a set-in-stone height limit for something like this if it ends up becoming a barrier to providing housing, especially to the potential for providing the lower-income affordable housing. So I strongly encourage you to approve the allocation of these units, all 246 units from the Missouri Bank, and to help this project go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roseanne Witt. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Roseanne from Thousand Oaks, speaking for the Canejo Climate Coalition. Three weeks ago, NOAA reported that both carbon and methane pollution rose in 2020 to levels not seen on Earth in more than 3 million years, despite a global economic slump due to COVID. Methane is the main component in natural gas, and it heats our atmosphere 86 times faster than carbon does. In a report on methane scheduled for release next month, the United Nations states that expanding natural gas use is not compatible with a stable climate. Dr. Drew Shindell, the study's lead author and a professor at Duke, warns it's going to be nearly impossible to remove enough CO2 to get any real benefits for our climate before 2050. But if we can slash methane, we'll see public health benefits within 10 years and climate benefits within 20. Those benefits include preventing hundreds of thousands of premature deaths and hospitalizations each year from 2030 on. Because methane persists for only about a decade after its release, unlike carbon, which lasts for hundreds of years, cutting methane gives us a fighting chance to stall our climate emergency. But we must do it now. So I'm here to remind you of your December 15th commitment to, quote, "designing and constructing new buildings to exceed green building standards," end quote, and to have our Sustainability Division review individual project plans at the start of the approval process. This council must take advantage of every opportunity to exceed Title 24 Energy Efficiency Building Codes in every general plan amendment request. All electric reach standards must be the bare minimum for all development in TO. In addition to requiring all electric heating and cooling, clothes dryers, water heaters, and induction cooktops powered by rooftop solar and battery storage, new developments should be encouraged to meet LEED certification and to install EV charging, energy-efficient windows and insulation, heat-reflected building materials, to protect mature trees for enhanced shade and evapotranspiration, and provide air filtration for projects near the freeway, like these at Amgen and Long Court. Cutting methane is essential to protecting our community from the severe consequences of climate breakdown, including drought, water scarcity, wildfire, air pollution, and the resulting health impacts. So it is likewise essential that you prohibit natural gas connections and require all-electric construction in both projects being pre-screened tonight and in all future developments in Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public speaker comments. I'd like to go back to staff to address any of the points that were raised, especially regarding the climate change that is now really very much on the radar of every project that comes before the city council. And we do have a Sustainability Division, and we are working on our own greenhouse gas emissions plan, Climate Action Plan. And we certainly expect new projects to be environmentally much, much stronger than projects in the past.
If I'm in, Madam Mayor, in terms of climate change, if the project moves forward to formal project applications middle, the sequel process will take a look and review climate change as well as all other environmental impacts that would be associated with the development, which will ultimately come back to city council for adoption if the project moves forward to that phase. So it's something that will definitely be considered.
Thank you. And I see Councilmember Adam has his hand up.
Yeah, Mayor, if there weren't any more questions, I was prepared to make a motion.
Are there any additional questions of our representatives here this evening, the applicant or staff? I don't see any. Then go ahead, Mr. Adam.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Amgen for the incredible partnership that they have had with our city over the many decades. You have created, your company has created a path to prosperity for many, many, many of our residents. And you have put our city on the map nationally and internationally, not to mention the incredible drugs and medications that you have come up with that have treated the ills of humankind that have plagued us for centuries. So you've been an incredible company, and we appreciate you being here in the city of Thousand Oaks. I do want to remind my fellow council members that we adopted a set of priorities not too long ago. And one of our top priorities is, in fact, to encourage and support the biotech hub in Rancho Canejo area, of which, of course, Amgen is a pivotal participant in that hub. And so with this piece of property, considering what's on it right now, basically an abandoned building laying fallow, I pretty much think that just about anything that we could come up with in partnering with Amgen is going to be far superior to what's being there now. And I suspect the project will morph over time as Amgen works with staff. Whether there's a hotel there or whether there's housing will be determined. I would just say about the housing part, our city does need workforce housing. So I would appreciate it personally if you could keep that in mind and if there's any possibility of increasing the number, that would be fantastic. And working with staff to come up with a, you know, the optimal blend between the very low and the low income. And I think that that would be good for the city and potentially good for Amgen, too. So with that, I would like to move that we approve the pre-screen for this project, the general plan amendment in 9A.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the number one recommendation under 9A. Are there any other comments? Yes, Mayor Portem Engler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to take this time just to give my comments and give my advice to the applicants here. I agree with Councilmember Adam that Amgen has been a great partner for the city, and we are currently building our biotech hub around them. That said, the property is, does have some issues, I think, being as proximate to the freeway as it is for housing. I'm a little concerned about the view-scapes coming off the freeway. Having two larger building there would cause some issues with view-scapes. Having a LEED-certified building, I think, is the way we need to go into the future so that we can replace that 50-year-old building that isn't anywhere near as efficient as our newer buildings are with something that would qualify for LEED would be a great addition to our city. But primary for me is the affordable housing issue. Having some workforce housing in an area of high employment is a, would be a very nice way to go for that property, in my opinion. If it turns into a hotel, I don't see the advantage in terms of affordable housing to the city and providing workforce housing. That is the way I would like to see it go. And if you can fine-tune your pencils and come up with as many affordable housing as possible so that we can help supply that vital part of living for our residents.
Thank you, Mayor Portem Engler. Councilmember McNamie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Amgen came to Thousand Oaks and basically put the city on the map as a biotech hub. And I thank you very much for doing that because it set the model for other biotech companies to say, Thousand Oaks is open for business and you're more than welcome to be here. It has been an incredible economic stimulator as Amgen has developed many of its medications and treatment options for the ill around the world. For that, I say thank you so very much. Again, this property was originally the city hall here in Thousand Oaks. Amgen purchased it from the city. My preference would be is that Amgen maintain a financial interest in that property because that would deepen your roots to this community. The trend is that Amgen is moving people out and/or resources out of California for reasons that obviously not really relevant to this discussion here. I wish we could keep Amgen to the fullest here in California, but you have to do what you need to do in order to keep the company viable and make the most decisions that... you need to do in order to keep the company viable and make the most decisions that financially benefit the company. As far as a hotel there, I think that's a brilliant idea. There is not a high-end hotel in that end of town, and instead of sending our people or our visitors over into the city of Los Angeles, or sorry, not the city of Los Angeles, the county of Los Angeles, to use the Four Seasons and/or the Westlake Inn, that benefits LA County and not Thousand Oaks. I think that's a brilliant move, so that way, Amgen, when you have guest speakers, guest researchers, whoever, they can stay in a high-end hotel in that end of town to help bring diversity to the building mix we have there. I am, again, just acknowledging that Amgen stepping away from that property, getting it through the prescreen here underway, probably have a developer in mind to sell it to, and then they move forward with it at that point. I just wish we could do something to keep you here and develop that for workforce housing for your employees so you can continue to attract talent, but that's not in the cards. Again, I thank you very much for what you've done for Thousand Oaks, and you've already heard my issues regarding parking and building height and so forth, so keep that in mind as it moves through the process, and I'll yield back to the mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember McNamie. Councilmember Jones.
Comments?
No comments. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and I would very much actually embrace this motion because I think that Amgen has been a very strong corporate citizen. And obviously, you put, as has already been mentioned, Thousand Oaks on the map. The biotech industry continues to grow in Thousand Oaks, and Amgen does everything with determination as well as taking great pride in careful planning. And so I have no doubt that whatever you decide to turn this parcel into, whoever the applicant may be, that it will be to the benefit of the city of Thousand Oaks and its residents. And so with that, I will ask for a vote. Councilmember Adam?
Yes?
Councilmember Jones?
Hi, with the concerns I've mentioned.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Councilmember Angler?
Yes.
And Mayor Build it up in you?
Yes.
And that motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. Thank you all. We will now move on to our next item, nine B, also dealing with residential capacity allocation, and that will be presented by Nizar Slim, or is it Nizar Slim?
It's Nazar Slim.
Nazar. Thank you. Thank you. My apologies.
No worries. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and just get my screen up here if you bear with me for a moment.
We will also have two public speakers for this one, and I believe that Mr. McCloskey is also part of this particular presentation.
All right, hopefully you can see this.
Yes.
And this is, this is, okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, and members of the public. The presentation before you tonight is a request to allocate residential capacity and the initiation of general plan amendment to allocate residential units for a multifamily residential concept located at eighty-six Long Court. As explained again, the request is to initiate a general plan amendment to allocate Measure E units, allow concurrent processing, and a prescreen process to evaluate land use concept for the allocation of the aforementioned fifty-five Measure E units to accommodate a total of seventy-five units. In order to do this, there's a prescreening process, and that's required for Measure E allocation. The prescreening process evaluates the concept according to the criteria developed by City Council in December of 2020, namely Resolution 2020 dash zero fifty-five. At this stage, we are at the concept level review through land use. Design details will be forthcoming once we have a formal application in process. Where we are tonight, it's at the prescreening reviews, what we're doing right now. It'll go to a pre-application permit, or pre-application submittal, once we've had a dialogue with the developer and ironed out some of the particulars. At that point, we'll be ready for application submittal. At that point, we've identified the entitlements necessary as well as the environmental sequel clearance that will be needed to have those entitlements, to follow through on those entitlements. It'll then go to Planning Commission for Hearing and Recommendation to City Council, where City Council will have the ultimate word on that. Again, as I mentioned, the prescreening criteria, the key considerations are the project setting, the concept plan, the concept features, regional housing needs, and SP twenty criteria. A little bit about the project site itself, it is located just north of the one-on-one freeway and south of Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Just to note, it is a through lot. It's flanked by Long Court and Moody Court. It is currently developed with four two-story office buildings, I believe that were permitted sometime in the seventies. There's associated landscaping, hardscape, as well as parking. Here's some onsite pictures. The first one here, View A, does look from Moody Court onto Long Court across the south end of the site. And another one here at the very end of Long Court, looking north towards Thousand Oaks Boulevard. One of the striking things about these photos, as well as if you go out to the site, there are numerous mature trees, a variety of conifers and deciduous. The site most likely supports protected oaks as well as sycamores and perhaps eucalyptus trees. I just want to make mention that there would be an arborist report that would be required at that time they do submit for their entitlements. And I do have one more slide here. This shows us the north end, sort of the north end of the site. And this area in particular, where we're looking at the parking area, that is proposed to be a sort of a quasi-public park of sorts, to be open to the public as well as the residents. And with that, I want to just take a look at the conceptual site plan. Here are some of the key features. As I mentioned, we do have a quasi-public park. These are going to be seventy-five units. Just to give you a quick breakdown, six of those seventy-five units are going to be affordable. Fifty-five of those units are coming from Measure E, and then there's a remaining twenty units that are going to come from the bonus density, which I'll discuss a little bit later. There's also a podium courtyard, and the podium also serves for, to serve housing, to house parking, as well as a surface lot as well. Anyway, here's a little view of the surrounding land uses. As you can see where the site is located here centrally, it is surrounded by commercial, residential, and office. Just again, to touch on the regional housing needs, currently, we have an unmet need of seven hundred and thirty-three very low-income units and four hundred and ninety-three low-income units. This concept does, is offering up six affordable units. That's eleven percent of the maximum density. Well, again, I should have said the six units are at a very low-income level. Again, eleven percent does allow them the thirty-five percent density bonus above the fifty-five, and that's per AB two twenty-three forty-five. And again, next steps, if council approves the prescreening, there'll be a pre-application process, as I described, in which case we go through some of the particulars and the details of a proposal and in the shape of a project. The formal applications will come in after we've identified the specific entitlements. Once we have the scope, environmental review can then take place. This is in the, again, specific plan, twenty in Thousand Oaks Boulevard, specific plan. There is an EIR on record for that, so it would be basically going through a checklist and make sure that whatever project proposed is going to be within that clearance. Then, of course, it goes to the Planning Commission for Review and Recommendation, and ultimately to City Council for final action. Okay, for tonight, the City Council has obviously two options. One is to adopt a resolution to initiate a general plan amendment to allocate those fifty-five units we spoke of from Measure E and to allow concurrent processing of legislative actions as well as the entitlements. Or two, to just deny the allocation of fifty-five units, and then there would be no more further discussion. I want to thank you for your attendance. I'm going to conclude the presentation. I am available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Slim. Appreciate that very much. I think this is actually, this proposal is a very good example of what will likely happen in the near future, in that old tired office buildings or commercial buildings will be repurposed for housing. So I believe that this is the first one to come before the council that is an existing building to be converted, whereas others have really been brand-new projects from the ground up. So do my council colleagues have any questions before we go to the applicant?
Forgive the interruption, Madam Mayor. I do want to clarify, this would not be a repurposing of the existing structures. For whatever reason, unfortunately, it may have been, and I'll let the applicant speak to that, it may have been cost prohibitive to actually go in and get those up to current code because it would have to be a change of occupancy, et cetera. So this is going to be a scrapping the existing site and building a new development.
Okay, so this is the first existing building, then, that will be scrapped, perhaps with the exception of the project that we just greenlighted at the prescreen level, the Amgen parcel, whereas the other prescreens have really been really flat parcels with nothing on them, and Baxter would be another one, and Kmart, actually, yes. Okay, Kmart was, of course, the commercial, and this one is office. This was all office. All right, any questions before I go to the applicant, and that will be Mr. Keith McCloskey? No questions? Okay, Mr. McCloskey, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Nazar, I don't know if you can share the site plan from your end or not, but if you could, that'd be great to give everybody some visuals of the proposed project.
Sure, let me, give me a moment here, and I'll see if I can get it up.
Yeah, while we pull the site plan up, I would say that, yeah, this is quite a bit different in terms of location, in terms of the owner type and lot type than we saw in the previous prescreen RCA earlier tonight. This one is a much smaller infill site. It's in the TO Boulevard specific plan, as Nazar mentioned, but it's also unique compared to maybe some of the other projects that we've looked at or worked on with other developers, such as the two-nine-nine TO Boulevard development, where it's not on Boulevard, it's off Boulevard. And so the program that we're proposing to put on this building is a mixed-income building consisting of market rate and affordable housing, in that blend that Nazar mentioned, which is very low affordable units at eleven percent on this site. Some of the other things to note here are that some of the areas that were previously parking areas, like on the north, would be converted to a publicly accessible park element for both residents and folks in the neighborhood, whether folks working in other offices nearby or other residents that want to enjoy this space. So the project is really trying to stay within more or less the footprint of the prior development. In fact, the existing surface parking lot that's on the south side, abutting the adjacent property before you hit the freeway, would essentially remain in that same general location. So we're trying to preserve that character, although we're not preserving the exact old office structure that wouldn't meet accessibility. We would be trying to build anew within that general footprint. And as you can imagine, you know, throughout the pandemic and as demand changes over time, the family that owns this parcel has been looking at ways to really push for a higher and better use on the site. Currently, the office spaces that are in this existing project are about forty-one percent vacant, if you look at it by a square footage basis. Other folks that are there may have trouble making monthly rent payments based on just challenges that have come along over recent months in the pandemic. And so this is really an opportunity for the landowner, Jason Lowe and his family, to build and invest in something long-term in the city of Thousand Oaks to develop housing in an area where it's in and around other diverse uses. As we saw earlier, there's residential, commercial, office, all within this general area. It's a short, you know, couple hundred feet walk to the Boulevard, and it's kind of nestled right up above the Boulevard on a bit of a hillside. And so it helps nestle the project into a topography that continues to go down towards the Boulevard, and we imagine that ultimately the building that gets built here would terrace along with that hillside. In fact, we're imagining some townhomes that would basically line the north end of our building, looking out onto that parklet, so it would have a very small intimately-scaled deal with townhomes, which the owner, Mr. Lowe, has actually had us look at the potential for live-work units there. So while it's an all-residential project, we're certainly interested in working with staff to deliver the appropriate use. And as we've seen in the seventeen-ten Lupe's development, the live-work units were actually the fastest to lease up there, and were really successful. And so that's something that we would study for this site as well. While maybe not the best spot for retail or a restaurant off Boulevard, the ability for someone to have a live-work unit here, we think, could have a lot of promise. So that's something that we're hoping to study further with staff if the project moves forward. But in general, yeah, it is a podium-style building, so it has structured parking. That structured parking would be completely buried from the hillside. The top of that parking would be flush with the surface parking lot for visitors and employees and guests coming to the project. And on the south, the north side, where the project daylights, as it goes down the grade, we would be lining that around the perimeter with housing units to conceal that parking. So it'll feel like a smaller-scale stepped residential development that feels integrated into the topography as well as into the neighborhood, and we'll maintain that connectivity between the two courts here with that open vehicular drive circulation there. And that's really about it for the summary on the architectural proposed program here. And Jason's with us tonight as well, if you have any questions for the applicant. And we're here to answer any other questions you guys may have.
Thank you, Mr. McCloskey. Are there any questions for Mr. McCloskey, the applicant? None? Okay. Then I will call the two public speakers we have, Mr. Jackson Piper, followed by Faith Grant.
Hi, can you hear me again?
Yes.
Members of the city council, thank you again for having me here to speak tonight. This project is a much smaller-scale site and a much smaller-scale project than the one that we just reviewed at twenty-one fifty West Hillcrest. But I believe this project is very worthy also of being given the requested residential unit allocation of fifty-five units. It will create seventy-five units in total of housing, including six units of very low-income for their thirty-five percent density bonus. And that is a small number, but then again, it's a very small site, so I think that's a reasonable trade-off. People who would reside at this site will be able to walk to many different businesses and services along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. I just did a quick calculation with about half-mile walking distance from this site to other locations on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and that basically at the western extremity covers out to the Wells Fargo Bank and Torrential Hill Brewery on the south side. Or if you don't want to go to the Wells Fargo, you can go to the One West Bank at one ninety-nine Or if you don't want to go to the Wells Fargo, you can go to the One West Bank at one-ninety-nine Hillcrest on the north side. If you go east on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, that'll take you out to the Armstrong Garden Center. And if you happen to need to get plastic surgery, there's the Institute of Plastic Surgery across the street on the north side that you can also walk to within a half-mile walking distance. And between those points, you know, you can go to Petals and Pints, you can go to Garden India Grocery, you can go to Kaiser, you can almost reach even the Hillcrest main office by walking half a mile from this site. It's just very slightly over it. You have Latino Market, you have restaurants like Himalaya and Sadoff, several dental offices, a bunch of other shops, and whatever else is coming down the pipeline with the new projects that are going in here. So, yeah, it's, you know, Thousand Oaks is not the ideal walkable city, but something like this places new residents in easy walking distance of a lot of different shops and services. And that's something that's really important to create a sense of walk, excuse me, walkability, and to to shift people's mode of transportation and reduce traffic in the city and create a more sustainable environment for us all. So I really think that this residential unit allocation request is a is a very positive thing, and I encourage you strongly to allocate the fifty-five units that we requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Faith Grant. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. My name is Faith Grant, and I'm a resident of Westlake Village. The City of Thousand Oaks CEAP Climate Environmental Action Plan notes that forty percent of our city's greenhouse gas emissions comes from our housing sector. With that in mind, we need to be grabbing each new development opportunity and insist on green building standards that will reduce these emissions. Cities in California serve as guiding lights as the state navigates a transition from gas to clean energy buildings. Motivated motivated by the climate crises, worsening air pollution, and safety risks from gas, a new cohort of local government leaders is emerging in California. Over fifty cities and counties across the state are considering policies to support all-electric new construction. I'm asking Thousand Oaks to join these cities. As a member of the Conejo Climate Coalition, we urge the developer and city to incorporate the following: all-electric connections, no gas hookups, and electric appliances and heating elements, rooftop solar and battery storage, and EV chargers for all units, to use recyclable, environmentally-conscious building materials, and to conserve water resources by installing gray water for irrigation. Because this property is next to the one-oh-one freeway, install setbacks and incorporate air pollution mitigation, including but not limited to installation and maintenance of an air filtration system and planting and maintaining an urban tree forest and other vegetative barriers. And speaking of trees, we ask that as many as possible of existing trees on the property be preserved, and furthermore, to plant more native trees and plants. Thank you for being forward-thinking and insisting on green building standards. This is a must-do for the climate and the livable planet.
Thank you. Does staff have any comments regarding the public comments made?
If I may, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
The environmental impact report or environmental study associated with the project, if it moves forward, will study all of the issues that were raised by the speaker. Additionally, the California Green Building Code would address some of the environmental concerns, which is currently in place and will be updated in about a year or so that would help address those comments.
Thank you so much. We do have a rebuttal, if you would like, Mr. McCloskey.
I don't have a rebuttal, but I did want to add one other piece of information in response to the last public comment, and that's that our firm KTGY has joined the AIA 2030 Challenge, which is a commitment to provide all projects filing to the DDX, which is an exchange where we post all of our sustainability data and energy modeling for the purpose of for research, but also it's a commitment to be carbon-neutral by 2030. And so while the Energy Code and California Building Code and Green Code are all very aggressive and get more aggressive with every code cycle, we will definitely meet or exceed all the stringent requirements. So we look forward to an opportunity to develop a very sustainable project on this site.
That's very good news, Mr. McCloskey. Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate that. As I was mentioning at the beginning of this particular hearing, the, we will probably see more of these, I called it repurposing, but I meant repurposing the the plots and the parcels in the future with more telecommuting happening now post-pandemic and also retail shrinking. We will probably likely see more of a conversion from office to residential, and I believe this is this is the first one. But Mr. Jones, you had your microphone off?
Yeah, could I, could I ask a couple of questions?
Sure, absolutely, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know, I guess this would be for staff. What is the heights of the building? Are they all uniform heights, or what what is the maximum height?
Currently, the the concept is showing just one structure, multi-level, and it does have different different massing. There isn't a height spelled out because we're still at the conceptual phase. It is in the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan. The specific plan does have a fifty-foot height limit, if that helps, but there isn't, there hasn't been any height limit proposed at this point. Again, it's conceptual, and it's mostly building massing and that and that sort of thing.
What is the height, if you know, of the structure now at the former Lupe's Restaurant?
The, the, Councilmember Jones, the front building is forty-four feet, and the back building is forty-six feet.
And how many units are on that property?
That is thirty, that is thirty-six total units of that site.
What what is approximately the size of the Lupe's property? How many, is it more than an acre, or what is it?
Yep. The site itself is a little bit over five acres, but the development site's about two acres, just under.
And what is the, what's the acreage here in the instant case we're discussing right now?
One-point-eight-six.
Well, seventy-five units, isn't that a little dense for a site that size?
Oh, they're different sites, if I may. The the Lupe site was really constrained, and the reason for the development was there was an allocation, a specific allocation for that site, limiting, limiting it to thirty-six units. And Mr. McCloskey was also involved in that project. There was a flood control channel that runs across the site. There was a water table issue for developing the site. There was hillsides, oak trees. The cycle straits actually limited the number of units they could have.
No, what I'm saying is, isn't the seventy-five that we're talking about for this project, isn't that a little dense for that size of a property?
Well, so I'll I'll touch on it, and I'll hand it over to the applicant. Again, this is conceptual, but based on the conceptual pieces that we've gotten and the square footage that's there on-site and the limitations of the design guidelines, development standards within the specific Plan 20, it is conceivable that you can't put seventy-five units on there. But I'll turn, I'll turn that to kind, I'll turn this over to the applicant. He could further kind of expand on that. Keith, if you want to do that.
Sure, yeah, the base density, if we were to use the thirty D per acre, is the fifty-five that we're requesting from the bank tonight. So that's consistent with some of the low-to-mid mixed-use developments and a commercial residential land use, as with other projects that we've seen, often in order to achieve enough units to make these projects feasible. The density bonus allocation of affordable units in exchange for some additional market-rate units often is needed in order to make the projects economically viable. So that said, it's consistent with the other projects that have been approved, you know, over the last couple of years through pre-screen and then ultimately to approval for projects like two-nine-nine T.O. Boulevard. That was a little bit more dense than this one.
Well, if I understand correctly, you're saying that there could be as many as seventy-five units with the density bonus? Is that?
Correct, with with the density bonus, including market rate and affordable units, could total seventy-five.
Well, i- if, as, as was said earlier, if you have two autos or two cars per unit, you know, that would be a hundred-and-fifty cars. The reason that I'm concerned is I go to a, to a mechanic who's up on Taylor, which is the next street over, which is fairly similar, and he's having to move because of the traffic. People can't get in to where his shop is. He's moving over to T.O. Boulevard. And I just don't know if that area would accommodate a hundred-and-fifty cars plus whatever else is there. Doesn't that seem pretty crowded to you?
Yeah, ultimately, as we study the building and we study the amount of cars that it can handle, we'll have the appropriate blend somewhere along the lines of what was discussed at the last meeting of somewhere in the ballpark of two, but we'd also likely have studios, and not all those studios would have two parking spaces associated with them. So ultimately, the final blend of parking is going to be somewhere between the one-point-five and two-point-oh spaces per dwelling unit, probably closer to two-point-oh. But we also have the benefit of having two streets to split that traffic out onto. So we've got an entrance to parking on Long Court and entrance to Moody Court, and so that traffic gets split from different residents leaving different streets at the same time, basically helping to dissipate that traffic into different locations.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNamie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. McCloskey, my, I share the concern of Councilmember Jones regarding the number of units there and the traffic going in and out. And you alluded to that the studio will have fewer parking spaces allocated by the state. But yet, I can tell you that a studio will have two people living in it needing two cars. Again, the fantasy of Sacramento and their numbers, trying to impose us to not purchase cars and work where we live, when that's not a reality. So to say fewer than two parking spaces for a studio, I think, is not genuine as to what reality is out there for most people. That's just the first comment. Second, again, the height limit is a concern for me as well, as I mentioned in the previous conversation with the other project with Amgen. I I'm not really in favor of that many cars as relative to the number of units and the number of people there on this location. So I share Mr. Jones' concern regarding this project. Just want to share that with you before we move to a vote eventually on this topic.
So, Councilman McNamie, excuse me, if I may, I just wanted to also refer to the the parking code also within the specific Plan 20, Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan. It does break down the parking requirement based on the unit type. And I know we we discussed it, but it's just, just to mention, to make a distinction that this is actually a city requirement and and not a state requirement. And as such, studios would have one space per unit. A one-bedroom would have one-point-two-five, a two-bedroom, one-point-two-seven-five. But again, that's a city requirement, and that's also within the Thousand Oaks specific plan.
Well, thank you for the clarification, but I'll still come back to my original premise on that. I don't think that's adequate parking for the number of cars per unit. And that's, that's the crux, whether I quoted the state or the city. In any case, I don't think it's adequate for the community that surrounds this project going in.
Thank you, Councilman. And i- if I just may add, as the project works through the process, we definitely will work with the applicant in order to address your concerns as best is feasible.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. It is a very busy area right there, and Commission, I mean, Councilmember McNamie is actually correct, or was it Councilmember Jones, about the parking on on Taylor. There is a lot of street parking, and as we look at these high-density projects coming before the city council, parking will be an issue. There is absolutely no doubt about that. It will be an issue, and we need to really look at this. I lived in a studio apartment, not by myself. I had a roommate. So, yes, there will be two cars. So, but we have a formula that that we follow. But I will say that when we go through the rest of this process and the environmental concerns and and process, that I don't think that any project that has been green-lighted at the pre-screen level so far will come back in its original form. They have to change one way or another. And with that said, if there are no further questions or comments, Mayor Potem Engler.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd, I would like to move the the question with the comment that this is in the SB twenty location under the specific plan. It's in an area already that has a mixed-use neighborhood. In other words, as Councilmember Jones pointed out, there are repair shops, there's businesses in the area, there's residential already in the area. So this type of of use on that building or the, or in that, on that building site, as you pointed out, Mayor, is a building that no longer is serving a function for the, for the owner or for the city, for that matter. I really appreciate that they're willing to embed some affordable housing within the the structure so that we have affordable and market-rate housing within the same structure. I appreciate the parking issues, and I'm sure that this will be heard by the developer and will be considered as part of their way of bringing things forward. So with that, I would, I would move that we allocate the residential units for that project.
Thank you. Councilmember Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to put things in perspective, in the nine years that I've been on the council, I can't believe it's been that long, but at any rate, as far as the Boulevard goes, we have had one project built, seventeen-ten, with thirty-six units, and we have another one coming up, two-nine-nine, with a hundred-and-forty-two. So to the best of my knowledge, we have approved a hundred-and-seventy-eight housing units on a three-mile-long Boulevard in nine years. So I feel that that's pretty much a drop in the bucket. However, we have made some improvements to the Boulevard, namely seventeen-ten, which will offer some restaurants in the front, namely two-nine-nine, which is a mix-of-use project that will have, I think, some incredible amenities for people to enjoy, restaurant, rooftop dining and many other things. We have Tarantula Hill that's gone in, just to name a few. Oh, and we have our campus master plan, which, when it comes to fruition, we hopefully will be a gathering spot for the entire city. The one thing we're missing on the Boulevard, at least at this point, is people. And I can attest to that fact, because if you drive down the Boulevard on a Sunday afternoon and you start at the auto mall and you drive down to Moore Park, you're not going to see many people out. In fact, you may not see anybody. So, this project, albeit small, does offer the possibility, because it's only three hundred feet from the Boulevard, to inject some life into our Boulevard and to bring some people that will hopefully walk around a little bit and create some vitality on the Boulevard, and then maybe attract a few more people. And they'll become a consumer base for the many businesses that are around there. So I think this is a small step, but a good one. I do think our P, our Boulevard needs a population living on it. And as the owner of seventeen-ten said to me, now that that project is completely leased, he said, Al, from what we can tell, people want to live on the Boulevard. And hopefully, we're going to give them a reason to do just that with some of the amenities that we have planned. So I will support the motion, and I appreciate you making it, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. Anybody else? No? Okay, very good. Really, the only thing that I will say is that, again, this is the wave of the future where tired old office buildings will take on different forms and will be used differently, and that is probably now residential. And we have to, still, we have an obligation to vet every project. And we have to, still, we have an obligation to vet every project staff does in terms of meeting parking requirements, environmental requirements, and so forth. And yes, hopefully, that will breathe some life into the Boulevard, but we shall see. So with that, maker of the motion, you have last word.
I have just called the motion.
Excellent. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Adam.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Councilman Adam's inspirational comments notwithstanding, I would like to vote no.
Okay. Councilmember McNamie.
No.
Councilmember Engler.
Yes.
And Mayor Bildelapena.
And I will vote yes, but again, the height of fifty feet, again, with past projects, always a concern. And I certainly hope that the owner, Mr. Lowe, will consider keeping the height at a much lower level.
And that motion passes three to two.
Okay, thank you. And now we move to item twelve A, twelve A-one, update on the Association of Water Agencies. Councilmember McNamie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As many of my council members know, I wear many hats and one of which is I am an instructor at Ventura College in their water science department, where I train the women and men who go into the water treatment plants and wastewater plants to prepare the water that we drink. I represent the council at the Association of Water Agencies of Ventura County, representing the city to listen to their various speakers as well as their meetings and provide feedback where I find that it's essential for our city to know of what's happening with water. And the last meeting, I thought, rose to the level of notifying not only my council members but the public of the direction of water in the Ventura County area which impacts Thousand Oaks. We had John Christ, who's the CEO of the Farm Bureau of Ventura County, make a terrific presentation. He commented how the farmers primarily get their water through groundwater, through the aquifers, pumping it up through the wells. They have overpumped approximately forty percent. And the state is telling the farmers that they have to let forty-eight, forty percent go pharaoh to allow those aquifers to recharge. So that's going to be a loss of income to Ventura County because agriculture is a big economic engine here in the area. And that in turn will impact Thousand Oaks because of the overpumping. The consumer, though, the residents, we get our water from Cuyeges throughout Ventura County. And that water from Cuyeges comes in from the Metropolitan Water District in Los Angeles, who gets it from other parts of the state. So we import it a hundred percent primarily to our residents here in Thousand Oaks. And as I listened in, I was very impressed to hear that the city of Ventura is moving forward with a sustainable approach to water for their city by doing water reuse that we talked about at the goal-setting meeting. And they're fully committed to making it happen. And then also, as I left the goal-setting meeting, the following meeting I had with Cliff Finley, he mentioned that the city of Los Angeles, the Metropolitan Water District, has actually filled their reserves with water to allow for some relief through a drought and water conservation. Now, two counties in Northern California have been mandated by the governor to begin water restrictions. That is not foreseeable right now because Los Angeles Metropolitan Water District has allocated and stored in their reservoirs more water to help get us over a hump and hopefully we get more rain. We've only had two good years out of the last five. We have never really gotten out of a drought, contrary to what the politicians in Sacramento have said. And we're marching into a very sad situation right now with water use. And water reuse needs actually be explored, in my opinion, as well as what was discussed at this meeting. So Mr. Finley came back at a meeting after the March thirtieth brainstorming, goal-setting meeting, and shared a wonderful concept that is a variation of what I proposed that may actually be viable. And Mr. Finley, are you available to share a little bit about that conversation you had with the other water purveyors and water reuse here in the area? Is he with us?
Yes, he is.
Yeah, I'm here. Actually, I think it's an in-depth conversation. And I think it would be better to share that with the entire council at a future council meeting, which we will be coming back to share that information if that is acceptable to you.
That is acceptable to me, and I'd like to bring it back to the table, discuss in further detail. And just let the public know that we're looking to have sustainability with our water and trying to look for answers. And there are answers out there to bring our water treatment system and our water utilization into the 21st century than what has been done before. So Mr. Finley is leading that charge, and I look forward to that presentation. And that concludes my report of what was presented there at the meeting.
Thank you very much, Councilmember McNamie. Appreciate that. And Mr. City Manager, Mr. Powers.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be coming up. We do have three meetings, just as a reminder, in May, but our next meeting will be on the eleventh of May. And the primary item that night will be our study session on our two-year operating budget. Following that, we'll have meetings on May the eighteenth and May the twenty-fifth. Both of those meetings will be focused on the general plan with a study session on the eighteenth and a decision on the map that would move forward through environmental on the twenty-fifth.
Mr. Powers, will we be in the chambers for the eighteenth?
Yeah, we'll be making an announcement later this week in conjunction with a number of other city reopening.
Thank you. Very good. Then I will turn it over now to our city attorney, Ms. Noonan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have one closed session tonight, conference with legal counsel for initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine, five-six-point-nine, D four.
Thank you. And I will not quite adjourn, but when we do, it will be in memory of Karen Olson-Gutchoff. Tonight, we are remembering Karen as a distinguished community member. She passed away on March twenty-sixth after a courageous battle with ovarian cancer. Karen was a teacher for more than thirty years and a graduate of Pepperdine University with a Master of Arts in Clinical Psychology. For Karen, her deep interest was in empowering women and helping those most vulnerable in the community. She was involved with various nonprofits in our community, including Program Manager of Emergency Services at Harbor House, Emergency Assistance Manager at Lutheran Social Services, Volunteer Coordinator at Many Mansions, Member of Seroptimist International, and a council member at Ventura County Volunteer Coordinators. Karen's generous work in Thousand Oaks caused her to be in positions to help hundreds of underemployed persons and families in critical situations. In 2019, Karen received a certificate of appreciation from the city of Thousand Oaks in recognition of her exemplary service to the citizens and families of our community. When she was not volunteering her time, Karen enjoyed yoga, taking art classes, doting on her dog Bert, spending time outdoors, and taking long walks with Norm, her husband of twenty-five years. We mourn Karen's passing and extend our sincere condolences to her husband, Norm, and her many friends. And Karen will be greatly missed. I am not quite adjourned in case we need to come back after our closed session. Good evening.
Richard, are you still there, or Carl?
Hi, this is Tracy Noonan. I just needed to report out of closed session that the council approved the initiation of litigation in closed session. Specific information related to this litigation will be available to the public after service of process is effectuated. And with that announcement, the meeting will be adjourned to the regular meeting on May 11th, 2021. Have a good evening.
So right now, we're in a time of what's been called social distancing. And another way you can really look at it is physical distancing, not social distancing. We want you to continue to connect with people that are supportive and that you love and that you care for. And right now, we're very fortunate with technology that you can use your phones, your tablets, your computer, and lots of online sources to dial into people, be able to see their face and connect with them. Always healthy is getting outside, of course, practicing six feet of space between you and someone else, taking a walk, maybe going in your backyard, on your terrace or balcony if you live in an apartment, keeping your mind active, not just sitting at home watching the news feeds all day. That is not necessarily healthy. We want you to limit your screen time to news outlets and really think about other things that you can do to engage and to help others. There are some awesome initiatives going around. Joanne's is giving out fabric. You can help make masks at home if you'd like to do that. I've seen nice little initiatives where people write cards and they leave it on their neighbor's doorstep just to connect with them and share phone numbers so that they can text or call each other. We want you to make sure that you're staying connected. In times like this where we are quarantined to our homes, it's natural to feel down and to feel isolated, but making sure you leverage whatever technology might be available to you and intentionally making yourself get outside, go for a walk, do something healthy to get your mind in a different place is absolutely essential for us to get through this together. For more resources, please visit www.wellnesseveryday.org.